Okay, so let's see. Jackie, is everything ready to get started?
This conference will now be recorded.
Yes, now that we are recording, we are good to go. Thank you.
Good cue. Great. Okay. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this April 1st, 2021 Planning Commission Special Meeting. That's going to involve some further discussion about development code regulations. It's considering an April Fool's joke to honor the day, but I decided after hearing some of the failed ones in the news that maybe that would be not a good idea, especially online here. So let's start out with roll call. And I will call everybody's name, and if you could just say that you're here, unmute yourself and say that you're here. I'll start off myself. Mark Baughman here, TC Laby.
Here.
Josh Shimato.
Here.
Karen Malcolm.
Here. Here.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
Rituja Indupir.
Here.
And Karthik sent me a text and said that he would be about a half hour late joining, and it looks like that's the case. So he will join us here right shortly. All right. Next, approval of the agenda for this evening. Does anybody have any comments about the agenda? Okay, hearing no comments, we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Approval of the minutes from the March 18th meeting. Does anyone have any comments? Have you had a chance to review any revisions to those meeting minutes? Don't hear any comments, so we'll call the meeting minutes approved by common consent. All right. Now, we would do public comment for non-agenda items. So Jackie, would you like to read the comment statement?
Sure, and I'm going to go ahead and do the meeting accessibility as well. I can kind of combine them into one, I think. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To view the meeting live, you can do that on the city website, on the city YouTube channel, or on Comcast Channel 21 within Sammamish. To view the meetings later, meeting videos are usually available the day after the meeting on the city website, the city YouTube channel, and on Comcast Channel 21. For verbal public comment, up to three minutes may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. The access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you, and it's your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. And it looks like we do have one caller, so I'll go ahead and unmute you, and you can go ahead and begin your comment whenever you're ready. Please begin by stating your name and your address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Victor, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, Washington. And I wanted to speak a little bit on non-agenda tonight. On your March 18th meeting, we hadn't been able to say anything, so afterwards, I had emailed in that since we're doing development regulations Phase 2, I don't know if any of you have gone through or are familiar with the actual permitting process from the city, but they've added something recently called product guidance. So if you want to do something like, you know, change your deck, or put up a gazebo, or install a trellis even, or a pergola outside, they have a way that you can do a product guidance request online. I believe it's a good system. It's easy to use. They don't let you write too few words. You actually have to use, like, if you don't put enough characters, it'll complain. You say what you want to do, it gets submitted. It's just a simple text thing. And then, in about five business days, the city staff will look at it, and permitting will reply back to you. The one thing that's a little bit weird is when it comes back, it's got a feasibility number, and it doesn't really say project guidance on it anymore, but it is project guidance. And they will actually give you portions of the code that would apply, and they will say, "You do need a permit for this," or "You don't." But even if you don't need a permit, it still says, "Your work must comply with all applicable regulations." And then they give you additional notes. So, for example, for my house, they had sent me eight pages. I had to do this in January, and it was very useful and informative to receive that from the city, see what they said. It's documented on my property. So I recommend that people do that. I think it's a good thing to do. Also, there's a popcorn for planning, which was started in the middle of COVID, but they did two sessions. They did one on trees that I watched, Trees 101, and they also did one on small permitting projects, or permitting for small projects. And they're both under 15 minutes. They're online, they're easy to review, and it just gives you an example, as somebody living in the city, what is available to people, the process that's used by the city. And I'm super happy and thankful that we have the great staff at the city that we do, who've created these tools, and I just wanted people to know about them. So that's all I wanted to say for non-agenda public comments.
Thanks for your comments, Mary. I'll hand it back to you, Chair Baughman. That was our only non-agenda public comment.
Yep, thanks, Mary, and thank you, Jackie. Okay, so we'll move to our old business, our main topic for this evening, which is a discussion about the next grouping of development code Phase 2 revisions. Jeff, are you starting us out? You're muted if you are. Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Yes, let me just pull up the screen share here. Okay. So everyone should see the opening slide for the presentation tonight. And we have a presentation to go through with some higher-level content, and then we have the document that we provided in the packet, which deals with those high priority or red topics in a similar format, as we discussed at the last meeting, for the green topics. And so we'll go through that after the presentation. If there are questions or comments as we go through the presentation, please just let us know, and we can pause for that. So our agenda, which I kind of just went through, we're going to talk a little bit about some code analysis that we've done, and this is content that we also presented to the community advisory group at one of their last meetings. The primary topics we want to focus on tonight are neighborhood design criteria, which will be a new section of the Unified Development Code, issues related to site planning for residential development, and the issue of clearing grading and tree retention, and also how that relates to development on sloped sites. We're going to give a little bit of an overview of the Unified Development Code, including an outline, some of the initial graphics and branding for the document, and then we can, at the end, talk a little bit about our next meeting, which is on May 6. We'll be bringing more draft code back to the commission for discussion. Okay, just move this out of my screen here. Okay, so this first slide is part of our code analysis that we did, and what this has to do with is how the open space requirement, so the amount of open space that's required for subdivision, as well as developers that choose to provide more open space than is required, and how those two things are really driving some of the development patterns that are happening in the city. And one of those patterns is smaller lot sizes and seemingly larger homes on smaller lots, where that sort of proportionality. So this little calculator that we did in these tables basically look at a standard sort of development in the R4, R6, and R8 development. And there's a lot of numbers there, but I just want to point out a couple here. So again, the city does not have a minimum lot size. So, for example, in the R4 district, the average parcel size, if you figured each lot was a quarter acre, would be 10,500 square feet. And the only things that are deducted from density are the street network and the critical areas. The open space actually counts towards the density requirement. So for each home that is developed or unit, there is 390 square feet of open space that needs to be required, and so that only gets your parcel size from 10,890 down to 10,500. And as you likely know, a lot of the developments have much, much, much smaller lot sizes, 4,000, 5,000 square feet with, you know, three to four, or even larger, square foot-sized homes. And the other thing that we also have seen is that even between, say, the R4, the R6, and the R8, the actual development patterns in terms of the develop, the density of those individual lots are actually pretty similar across those different districts. There really isn't that much variation, and part of that, we think, is because developers are providing more open space than is required. And there are reasons to want more open space, but I think there are also some reasons to have some concern around it, because it is, one, I think, driving the development forum that you're having, and also to think about the quality and the function of that open space, right? Is it just an open space tract with a bunch of trees? Is it sort of a buffer around the backs of homes? Is it additional recreation space? What exactly is it, and how does it function? And this also relates, I think, a little bit to our discussions around the maintenance of some of these open space areas and infrastructure as it relates to homeowners associations. So that's another thing to kind of think about. So when we did this little calculator, I think to us, what we're seeing is that developers are providing a lot more open space, and what that does is it minimizes the amount of roads that you have to build, the amount of grading that has to be done, the amount of clearing that has to be done. So there is a potential cost savings to the developers in sort of doing that model. So that's one piece that we want to hear from the commission on tonight as we move through our presentation and the discussion of the topics. So with this in mind, we put together two examples or two diagrams, and these are actually developments within the city of Sammamish, and kind of look at how open spaces is being provided between these two developments. I forget the name of this development. David, I think, would know it. I believe this may even have been developed either right before or right as Sammamish was...
The Laurel's. Laurel's.
Thanks. The Laurel's off of Southeast 24th Street. And my understanding is this was actually done as a planned unit development? And we just want to talk about some of the features that we really like about this development. So a couple of things. One, the open space is really pretty integrated into the development. These lots are small, but there's open space that's integrated. So this open space around the edge is a nice kind of forested buffer. There are, is a stormwater pond and associated open space that is fronted out along the arterials. You don't get large retaining walls, or, you know, the backs of homes really close to arterial street. There's also a recreation area, again, that is kind of part of the arterial frontage and the entrance into the development. Even though there are small lots, they do a really good job with landscaping and tree canopy, and you can see that kind of shown in green. It really sort of helps to kind of break up some of those small spaces and create a little sense of intimacy in some of these small spaces. The street section on the left-hand side shows that it's a very low-impact street design. The width of the street from curb to curb is only 10, 20 feet. So it's about two 10-foot travel lanes, but there is intermittent parking that even can happen on these streets, and we did see some of that. The lots themselves are interesting in that they have these sort of jagged or zero-lot-line type developments. And in many cases, the garage is actually recessed towards the rear of the property, and there's a narrow, fairly narrow driveway on the sides of the homes that give access to the garage and the parking area. So the impacts, the aesthetic impacts of parking, I think, are well minimized in this development. And this is, these lots, even though they're about 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, the homes are only 2,000 square feet. So there's, I think, a good proportionality between the size of the lot and the size of the home, even though you can see in this lower diagram that, you know, those lots are fairly filled out, but it just doesn't have an overwhelming feel when you're out on the street or walking on the sidewalk. So we think this is a really good example of a pretty quality development in the city.
Jeff, can I add a couple things to this?
Yes.
So if you recall, some of the points we've been talking about are also separation around the perimeter. So I think, you know, Jeff already highlighted this, but what that does is it allows you to have a little bit of a different density in terms of lots being placed closer together. So if you had more of a conventional, traditional style of division that, say, occurred in the '60s, '70s, or '80s, on either side or to the north, and you were to have this infill come in, those neighbors would not necessarily feel the change occurring in their backyard as much with this type of open space, green belt wrapping around the property. In addition to that, by pushing the project in off of the main arterial, I think it's 24th, Southeast 24th, you don't really see or notice that density as well. So they have maintained that character along the front. They've maintained character around the perimeter of the property, and that allows you to, through some kind of planning of development or alternate density, fit more in there into the site, and people are opting into this type of development as opposed to it being something that is being imposed on the neighbors, right? So I think that's a really important thing. We've heard a lot about that through public comment over the years, that, you know, "This is happening right in my backyard. It's really affecting me." So this type of design really diminishes that effect on the surrounding existing neighborhood and character.
Yeah. Josh, looks like you have a question?
Was the Laurel's the neighborhood that the advisory committee identified as the type of development people want to see more of? Or are you just pointing out some of the characteristics that separate this development from older developments as being a positive result of this development?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we brought it forward to the committee advisory group as an example, but I think they're, they generally agreed that it was a good example, and I think were supportive of this type of development, you know, being encouraged or supported either through the new base neighborhood design standards, or as part of the new Planned Unit Development code that we'll also be developing. So, yeah.
Okay, because I, this is not that far from my house, so I end up walking that neighborhood pretty frequently. And outside of the buffer around the neighborhood, I feel like this neighborhood is exactly the, is an example of what people don't want to see more of in Sammamish, because the houses are so close together. People can literally lean out of their two windows and hold hands. It is very close together. And time and time again, I hear that people do not want to see that anymore. I understand the value in that people are opting into it, and they're moving there, and the houses aren't seen by people who've lived there before, but, so I get that portion of the example. I don't know that I agree that the closeness of the lots and the houses on those lots are an example of what people want to see here.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a fair comment. And I would just say that, and we're going to talk about that, and I think we generally agree with that, that there needs to be some better proportionality, but I think our takeaway was, for this type of sort of small lot development, I think it's better, it's a better example than some of the projects where there's even larger homes connected together, you know, in close proximity. But that is to say that we could, we don't necessarily have to advance all of the elements of this particular project. So I think... I have to say, Jeff, I would echo what Josh says. I've been in this neighborhood a few times, and, you know, the house proportions are actually pretty good. The buffer around it is great. The distance between the houses is awful, and it looks to me like a fire hazard, because they have garages from one house overlapping, just like you said. And if there's a fire back there, I can't believe the fire department would ever accept this. I would also say that the street size, I understand the desire to have a narrower street, but I've been in here a few times when it's pretty difficult to get through the neighborhood, because people start parking on both sides of the street, even if they're not supposed to. So I think we should just be a little cautious about, you know, looking for the good, but not ignoring some of the things that are maybe not so good as well. Yeah. Yeah, no, those are, those are good comments, and we'll offer some other suggestions as we move through this around how we sort of right-size the lot parcel size as it relates to the size of the home. So I think that will, that will help address some of the comments that were just made. Any others from any of the other commissioners?
I think there, there's definitely, you know, some good information here within, you know, this high-level diagram, but looking at it from a standpoint of how it's playing out practically, utilizing one of the aerial photos, like Google Maps or something like that, you can see how quickly some of these roads get choked down just by two cars being on opposite sides of the street parked in front of people's houses, or if you look at, I guess I would call it kind of the one or two o'clock position up there, those, it's like six or so houses that kind of shoot off, yeah, right there, that little cul-de-sac or court, or however you want to call it, that doesn't conform to the same road standards, I guess. And, you know, as soon as you put, you know, one person parked in front of their house there, it ends up, you know, becoming very difficult to move in and out of that area.
Yeah.
And I'm only bringing that up because, at the same time, I'm also looking at the Google Earth image of that, just to kind of, I guess, pick it apart, if you will.
Yeah, no, that's a, those are good comments. I think, we're not necessarily proposing, you know, all of the characteristics of this development. We want to take, you know, what we think is good and move it forward, and not the other pieces. We're not necessarily proposing to permit streets this narrow, but I think the counterbalance to this are the streets that have two lanes of parking that don't get used, and you sort of have the opposite potential for increased speed and safety issues. So we just want to provide a little bit more of a balance, so, but all really good comments. Any others before I move on?
If I could add one thing, and that is, you know, is if commissioners have time and want to go on to King County iMap and look at the aerials photograph and overlay the parcel lines, and start to pan around the city, you know, move the map around the city, the aerial photograph, and try to, you know, look at the patterns that you see. I spend a lot of time looking at those aerial photographs and property boundaries just by way of what we do all day, and you start to see some patterns and things that work and things that don't work. And if you see patterns where there are small lots butted up against big lots, and you see methods that are used to interface those in a better way, you know, I'm definitely curious to hear what you think. You know, one of the struggles that we have is that we are seeing less meaningful assemblages of land available in the city, or fewer meaningful assemblages of land available in the city for larger-scale development. And what we are starting to note is that what we're going to see are lots that are odd-shaped, that are not prime for development, that are available, or lots that have encumbrances like critical areas, or, you know, streams, wetlands, and that type of thing on them. And we're going to be presented with pressure in time, maybe not immediately, maybe not in the next five years, maybe not in the next 10 years, but in time, we will be presented with pressure for those lots to build out. So what we're trying to do now is give the city, give staff, the city, you know, everyone the right tools and the toolset to make sure that the outcome of that development is something we want. And what we would like to do is to set up two basic sets of rules. One set of rules is what I call the safe harbor. And the safe harbor rule for a developer is really important, because they know if they come in the door and they do X, Y, and Z, they will get a permit to build what they want, right? And the safe harbor rule is usually something that we set a little more restrictive, because we want to make sure we're going to get the right outcome. But then, there's another set of rules that we could have that are, that are more flexible, that are more design-oriented, that are really after achieving a better outcome, a better product. We typically call that a planned unit development. It has some discretion. It allows us to work with a developer to get a better product. They might have some benefit to them, too, like a density bonus, like, say, 10%, 15% increase in density if they're able to buffer it around the perimeter, or do things somewhat like they're doing in the Laurel's. I'm not endorsing all of that. I'm saying that they have, they have done a lot of what we hear people asking builders to do, but our builders are somewhat unwilling to do these things these days, because it costs, it costs money in terms of land. So think of it that way of, if you were to set up one set of rules that were the safe harbor rules, that were, you know, you come in, you get a permit, you do X, Y, and Z, versus another set of rules that we could have that are more flexible, but that are a little more challenging, that requires, you know, you go to a public hearing, you have architectural design review, all those things. That's the rough context that we're thinking about, or the structure. But I'll let Jeff get back to the presentation, but I wanted to sort of plant that in your head about, you know, how our rules could work. Right now, we only have one set of rules. It's a safe harbor set, and if you do X, Y, and Z, you get a permit. Staff have very little discretion or authority to do anything but what the code requires, and our code requirements are very minimal, if any, right? So we don't have a lot of authority over what our, our development looks like in the city right now, because we are, I would say, severely lacking in design standards and requirements and guidelines for subdivisions.
Yeah. Thank you, David. So I also forgot to mention in the beginning, I have a couple other members of our team here at the meeting tonight. So Leslie Vane with Frame Mark is here, and Lee Einswiler from Code Studio are also here, so I encourage them to speak up if they have thoughts on any of these topics as well. So I just wanted to mention that. So, you know, again, not to say that we want to carry forward everything that's in these examples, but we really just wanted to show the contrast between this example and another one we're going to show in a minute. But the big policy question related to lot size and open space is, you know, does the city want to continue allowing unlimited open space to count towards density? You know, and if we do, do we want more criteria around what the open space sort of functions and qualities are? Or do we also want to have some standards that have a better proportionality between the size of the lot and the size of the house? So to address some of those concerns that we're just, you know, just brought up around the closeness of homes being developed, and how the public would like to see a different model developed. So the other example that we have in this diagram, this is the Highcroft, which has been subject to a lot of discussion in the community. And, you know, there are some things that we like about this development, and things we don't care for as much from a sort of urban design or design standpoint. So, of course, one of the challenges is the backs of the homes and the retaining walls, you know, all, you know, right up there on 228th. So we have some slides on arterial frontages that we're going to show you coming up here in a few minutes that could help address that, right? So like the other example, they had open space around, right along the frontage of the arterial. Here, it's all the homes, and the open space are these tracks here and here. I believe during our public comment period, a meeting or two ago, someone mentioned that this site was something like 30 acres, and 10 acres of it was, was open space, which on the face of it, sounds like a good thing. But here, rather than necessarily be really integrated into the site, it is to some degree in this location and the backs of these homes, it's sort of these large open space tracks that are there. There's the small recreation area, which is the requirement, but other than that, it's these forested areas. And with that, by protecting these areas, that's really what permitted them or allowed them to develop such large homes on small lots, right? And uh, so that's, I think, one of our, the other big policy questions is, you know, what is an appropriate sized home for, for, for an appropriate sized lot? And what does that look like from a site planning and a, and a design perspective? Uh, so these homes are very close together, but again, they're much larger. There's like a, a, you know, the side, the square footage of the home is, is pretty close to the size of the lot. There's sort of less variation. All the parking is tucked out front because there's no room on the sides to sort of push it towards the back. Um, and the homes are very close together. Um, so this is an example. There are some things we like. There's some kind of low volume, uh, kind of play streets in here that we like. Um, you know, and certainly some of the wooded areas, you know, have some nice qualities to them. Um, but the landscape isn't as mature yet, um, you know, which will happen over time, but um, just doesn't quite have the same uh, impact as, as it does in the other example. Um, the street design, uh, the travel lanes are wider, but it does allow, again, for parking on both sides. Um, so, you know, maybe that's more appropriate than the, the last example with the much narrower streets. Um, so, uh, I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or comments on, on this uh, diagram or this project.
I can't resist Jeff making a couple of comments about this one because this is definitely one of my pet peeves, this particular neighborhood. Um, some other things that I think we should recognize that most people dislike, the, uh, there's essentially no yard for most of these.
Yeah.
No backyard. Obviously there's no side yard because they're built, I mean, literally, I think roofline and roofline looks five feet apart, maybe face to face is eight feet, but, um, and then there's just no backyard to speak of whatsoever. Um, the other thing that they did here, which was really, we talked about a lot, but I have to point it out because this is an example of it. They did their grading in a way that hap, that these houses along 228th are gargantuan houses to begin with, but they're also set up in the air for the most part, um, which makes it even a more disproportionate um, view for all of the people driving by on 228th, which is not the highest priority, but it certainly should be some priority. And that's, I think, part of the conversation is, you create this so that, yes, there are some nice green spaces back in the back, and that's a good thing. Um, but most of the people in San Amish who have concerns about development will never see that green space in the back. What they see is these massive, right next to each other looming monstrosity houses that are overlooking 228th. And that's what gets people upset is when that's what they see. Um, had they graded this differently, um, and even just created a little bit more space between the houses like you're describing, maybe we should consider, this would have been a much differently perceived development.
Yeah. No, those are, those are great comments. And we found in other projects that just the visibility of a project obviously has a big impact, right? If there was a forested buffer or something, you know, people would have a very different perception of it. So really good comments.
Right. Hey, add on to that. So, so um, uh, Chair Bopin, um, you know, one, one of the things that we see as, as an alternate that could have been used here is in, instead of creating pads and then doing um, your, your traditional spread footing, uh, crawl space type on top of the pad, what they, they could have done is actually graded it out to the, the easterly walls and use the foundations as the retaining wall and had a top loaded home or a middle loaded home. Um, and then they could have had a lower level and an upper level. And that grade line would then have pushed the homes down in comparison to the road. And the, the issue there, and this is one that we've been around and around with builders on, is that builders want to come in and super grade a site and create building pads that they can then sell the building pads to someone who wants to live in that area in the division. Then they can sell one of any five different homes that will fit on the site. Um, and it creates this sort of um, you know, factory assembly line sort of feel to it. Instead of, you know, designing homes to actually fit the, the, the context and, and the topography. And if, if they had gone about this differently, they, they might've had even a better product that, that was better integrated into the landscape and more thoughtful, but it's just the approach that builders take. And I think that, you know, the changes that the commission made um, on phase one will, will start to steer builders away from that. Um, and I think some of the changes that we're talking about with phase two here, um, will also continue. You know, if we were able to get uh, a design criteria that required that homes, that, that the foundations and the earth retention systems incorporated into foundations are preferred over grading and rockeries or retaining walls, that, that would be something we could add to our criteria for subdivisions, right? Um, so just sort of keep that in mind, you know, I, I, I totally hear what you're saying. And I, but, but I just wanted to also highlight what I thought would have been an alternate method of them building these homes out.
So I have a, another question that goes towards kind of the open space and things like that of, of this particular project.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like, at, at least to me on the surface, this builder did everything that they could to just push as much open space, if you will, into little pockets and nothing was done to make it usable or walkable or enjoyable, much beyond just the, the back patios of the few people who abut the land. Is there any requirement to make that space something that can be enjoyed by any other segments of the population?
No, uh, not that, not that I'm aware of. Um, and I think that's, again, one of the big policy questions is, you know, is there criteria for how that open space functions? Does it have to meet certain criteria if it's counted for density or not counted for density? Is there some sort of limit to that? Um, should we kind of shift some more of the open space requirements onto the yards, right? I mean, essentially, those lots are so small because they're providing that, those open space tracks, right? But if everyone had a yard, you know, maybe that's a better balance. Um, the other thing about these is they're not publicly accessible, right? They're not publicly owned. So the only people that could theoretically use them uh, would be folks that live there. So that could be another thing. Um, you know, if you're going to do something significant, should it be a, a public park or have public access? Um, you know, I, I don't know the, the answer to that, but I think, yeah, those are all, I think, the questions that we're, we're, we're trying to sort out here. Um, you know, and I think there are things like, um, you can kind of, again, play with the sort of incentives or the levers. Uh, let's say that, you know, if, if we wanted to require a, a forested buffer be along the arterial, you know, we might say that's got a significant public benefit. We're okay with counting that towards density. But if it's just a, a clump of trees and it doesn't have public access, there isn't trails, there isn't a whole lot of public benefit, you know, maybe that doesn't get counted towards, uh, towards the density. Or maybe if you want to do something that has significant amounts of open space, then you have to go to the planned development criteria, which, you know, would have a, a more rigorous process to, to sort of figure out uh, what the public benefits are of providing that open space. So I think it's, it's really just kind of defining what the community wants and uh, and trying to kind of embed that into the code.
You know, it, e- even beyond, I think, just the public benefit side of it, the, the residents of this particular subdivision cannot even really enjoy this green space if there are no trails and there's no a, ability to get out there. Um, I think the other thing that we kind of look at in this, and, and I think it came up in either the last meeting or the meeting before wherein uh, some members of HOAs had called and written in looking for uh, you know, city assistance and guidance in dealing with things like manicuring trees, right? Now they can, you know, and HOA comes back and says, you mandated that we have this green space here, but you're not doing anything to help us maintain it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, so that's, that, you know, in, in my time in Bellevue, actually, the Bellevue City Council changed their policy and their comprehensive plan and they actually um, embarked on a program of, of acquiring the open space tracks that were in subdivisions because the, they found that um, the divisions that had required open space were not being managed properly by the HOAs. Um, and it was primarily not, not out of lack of desire, it was just out of lack of resources. They didn't have the funds, they didn't have the manpower, they didn't, they didn't necessarily want to impose a, a, um, you know, if, uh, um, there's a term for it, I, I don't, I don't have an HOA in my neighborhood in a, yeah, um, assessment on, onto the different properties just to maintain the, the open space. So the question, you know, what, one of the questions here is, if you're looking at this image and if there were not wetlands and streams and slopes and those sorts of things, would it be better to have the division look like this? Or would it be better to have the division incorporate this open space into the backyards of the homes, create, create open space easements on the backyards of the homes, but then have those, the prop, the, the property include that? Or would it be better to sort of thread it more through the, the, the division and include trails as amenities? Um, you know, I, I, I also am curious, I'm not an appraiser, nor am I a real estate professional by any means, nor do I want to be, but uh, it's a side, side conversation. But the, um, the, the, the issue here or that I see is that, you know, what, what is the higher value? Where are you creating better value in the community in terms of property as an asset? Um, is, is the property better divided up amongst these lots and making the lots bigger? And therefore you're able to have, you, you know, more value created within the community? Or are, are you better creating the small lots and big houses and setting the land aside separately? You know, that, that is also, I, I think, a, a really good question here.
So, um, I know, the southern open space is on an extremely steep slope, if my recollection is right, I'm looking at the contours on, on the map here. And so it might've been very expensive to build there. So it looks like they got two bangs for the buck there by just turning it into open space and then not having to worry about developing it. And so what probably might not have been developable anyway, they just got to count towards their open space requirement, which I think is something we should consider. Um, to answer your question, David, I think there's more community value in dispersing the open space between the lots so that you can have trails or amenities like that. And it kind of, I think that speaks to more of the character people that, the character that people are used to. I, I believe you mentioned one of the city council meetings that Tree Farm was an example of something like that, that people liked, that I think the advisory group pointed out.
Yeah.
And I would agree with that after going through that, that that is what I think people are looking for is communities that look more like that. Maybe not exactly, but taking more of those elements that don't do what was done here um, in this development. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Good, great comments.
One, what, just, just one more, and, and is, you know, one, one thing we might add as a criteria is that, that when you can, you should add on to existing already established adjacent open space systems in a way that, that adds value to that system. So in, instead of treating it, uh, you know, each, each development like an island, what we're looking for is how does everything stitch together? So it might be good for us to find a way to add a criteria that when looking at designing open space, it should be designed and oriented in a way such that it adds, it, it, it improves value or adds value or functionality to existing established open spaces on adjacent properties.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think these are all really good comments. I would just add that, you know, I think, you know, people are generally more willing to live in a tighter uh, parcel or a, a townhouse or a smaller unit when they have amenities outside their door, right? And, and that could be trails, it could be parks, it could be, you know, all sorts of stuff. But this kind of, to me, feels like you have the sort of smaller lots and bigger homes, but you don't really have those amenities that, that go with it on the same scale. So, um, I think, you know, if we could develop what those criteria are and, and uh, understand the trade-offs of more open space versus larger lots and, and try to find the right balance there, I think, um, that will help us achieve some of our goals. Okay. Move on to the next one. So, uh, this slide is uh, looking at your dynamic setbacks that were uh, put in place for um, uh, phase one. And my understanding, and I, and I wasn't part of that process, but um, that this was partially in, in response to this issue of these very large homes um, on these relatively small lots. Um, let me just move my thing out of the way. Um, so we started to look at, you know, what are, what are these dynamic, how do these dynamic setbacks impact development if you took a standard 5,000 uh, square foot lot? Um, and, you know, they apply, as you know, based on the size of the home. So a 5,000 square foot lot with a, a 2,500 square foot home, um, the orange area is the area that you have to develop, right? And so what this, what this means is that you have a relatively small home compared to what's being built and you have a larger area to do it. So what that means is you have more flexibility in how you design that site. Um, going down below it, this shows what a, a footprint might look like. And again, here we've shown it kind of in the corner and you have access on one of the side yards, but it could be pushed this way or it could be pushed back. It gives you some design flexibility. Um, if you wanted to do a home up to 4,000 square feet, um, which would give you a Florida area ratio of about 0.8, meaning the home is, square footage is 0.8 of the size of the lot. Now you have a bigger home and you have a smaller area to, with which to build it in. Um, so even though your setbacks are bigger, um, in order to max out the size of that lot, you know, you have a smaller area to do it. So it does have the intended effect of uh, creating larger setbacks potentially, although in this example, they can't build out the entire orange area, so you actually end up with some, some more setbacks. But what this does allow for again is a 4,000 square foot home roughly on a 5,000 square foot lot, which is pretty similar to the examples in the uh, in the Highcroft. Um, so I'm not, you know, I think from our analysis, I think there is a, a, a point at which the dynamic setbacks are, are still allowing large homes on small lots. Um, as you get up to the next level, if you wanted to do a, a home that's greater than 4,000 square feet, at this point, your, your area becomes so small, then I do think it would have the intended effect of, of uh, resulting in a larger uh, lot size. So I think, um, you know, one of the things we want to talk about tonight is, you know, do we need some other controls related to the size of the house versus the size of the lot and how that relates to those uh, open space requirements? Any questions on that or comments?
I don't have a question on this. I, I just um, wanted to understand, on the advisory committee, did you have people who were living in, for example, in Highcroft or who were living in Laurel? Did we have a mix of people living in different kinds of residents?
I don't believe that they did the mix uh, based on where folks lived, but it was a mix of residents and professionals. Um, I don't personally recall if, if any of our members lived in either of these developments. Um, but maybe David or?
That was, that was not one of the criteria for our um, recruiting for the board or the, the, the commu, the community advisory committee. Um, so we did not look at where, we were not looking for even geographic distribution, um, just to be clear.
And then I'm assuming nobody on the commission right now has lived in those two uh, developments either. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this next one now gets a little bit, sorry, let me just move my screen here so I can see. Um, so kind of looking at parcel orientation and sort of the design and orientation of the homes, right? So, um, you know, sometimes uh, lots tend to be narrow and long, and that's the example on the left. Um, uh, right now, there's pretty minimal criteria on sort of the orientation of lots. We just wanted to show the contrast between sort of wider lot frontages versus narrow lots and how that relates to the design of the site. So narrower lots obviously tend to lead to narrower buildings, which really do minimize the bulk and scale of, of the home itself, right? Um, you know, you're, if you're in the sidewalk, you're out in the street, you know, you're only kind of seeing this frontage of it. Um, so that's, that can be a good thing. Um, but the, the challenge with these narrow lots is that you end up with a large portion of your frontage being parking, um, because there really is no access on the side um, to, to sort of tuck the parking back. Um, you could- Um, you could have an alley loaded development, but this example here is is not alley loaded. Um, I believe right now there is a five foot setback for the garage, which is kind of shown here. But again, you still get this issue of of kind of parking and garage and driveway kind of dominating the frontage, and there are some ways to minimize that potentially um by creating maybe a little bit li- larger side yard to be able to tuck the parking back, or again, use of an alley or something like that. Um, the the next example here is more of a square lot. Um, again, similar, uh, this this one has a a point five F A Rs, so the house is smaller relative to the size of the lot. This one is a larger home um on on a smaller lot, which again contributes to it, it's sort of overwhelming the lot to some degree. So when you have the the square lot and sort of, again, the the narrower building profile, this allows you to to set the parking back a little bit. It doesn't have to be setback as far as it's shown here, you know, it could be sort of anywhere within that zone here. Um, it gives you a bit of a lot larger side yard and, you know, ability to plant trees and give some sense of privacy. Um, this, because it's a relatively small lot, you know, there isn't a large backyard, but again, if we had uh larger requirements for lot size, um, you know, that that could help mitigate that. The other thing I would add is that when you have a large home on a smaller lot, it makes it harder to do like an accessory dwelling unit. Um, so one of the, one of the things to think about is that larger lot sizes could actually result in more units um because of the ability to develop an accessory dwelling unit. So if this uh parcel was, say, 8,000 square feet, you know, that would give the ability, um, not to say that you couldn't do it on this, but you'd have more room to to potentially do an A D U or something like that. So um, not to say that one of these examples is better than the other, but we just wanted to kind of show some of the issues that we've been thinking about from a design standpoint for how that parcel size and orientation and design of the actual house itself, it kind of impacts the look and feel uh of that neighborhood.
Can I ask you, Jeff, when you look at this, and maybe I'm reaching in my interpretation, but it looks to me like most people, most developers would look at this and and really not want to, they they would consider the the um image you have there on the right to be undesirable, maybe even limiting their ability to build. I mean, I'm trying to think about, the the reason you get these narrow lots is because you can stack them all up together in a tight space and build them all side by side, right? And the wider lots, I would think most, most subdivisions that they're trying to develop, it would be harder to fit as many homes if you have a configuration more like that. Am I reading that right, or am I misinterpreting what you're showing here?
Um, well, there, these are both the same sized lot, but yes, I do think, I do think you're right, because the the reason that they probably like the narrower lots is there's less road per uh per home, right? So here, you know, your your amount of roads that you have to build is less. Um, and I, not to say that this can't work, I mean, if, for example, instead of having this uh parking and garage in the front, they had an alley and this was a front porch and a nice yard, I mean, I think that could work fine. It's more, it's more that the just this um, this type of development under the current standards, you know, does happen fairly frequently, and I think you're right, this is likely a favored pattern. And I think what we've been thinking about is we don't want to be so overly prescriptive, but we want to give options. And so we'll talk about some of those standards, like if we had a Florida area ratio limit, you know, that wouldn't exactly, um, you know, be prescriptive in terms of one of these models, but it would have a some sort of proportionality between the lot and the home. But yes, uh, developers definitely would favor this on the left, on the left hand side. Any other comments or questions?
Um, the narrower houses, the narrow option on the left makes sense to me when you have an alley in the back and you move the parking to the back. I looked at an area that had that sort of design on one of the major streets, and it was just the front parking, the front, the road in front, the main street was pretty calm, there was limited parking in the back, you had the garage or the alley access, and it was just really nicely put together, but still the houses were pretty close, it just didn't feel like they were. Uh, so I think doing something like that makes makes sense with those smaller lot, those narrower lot sizes.
Yeah, and so, yeah, they're a great comment. And so I think what we would do is we would say, well, one of the things we've been thinking about is do we have a percentage limit of how wide your driveway is compared to the frontage of your lot, right? So let's say it was 30% or 20 feet, whatever was greater, and maybe there's a minimum of 12 feet regardless, you know? So you could say, okay, well, we want the double loaded driveway, we're going to build a wider lot, we're going to push the garage back a little bit. Um, another developer might say, I don't want to do that, um, I want to do narrow lots, but I can't, you know, I don't want to do a one lane driveway, um, and I don't want to, you know, kind of put it on the side of the house, um, because I want to kind of maximize uh the amount of house frontage that I can have, but the city will let me do an alley, and so now I've chosen to do that direction. I think that's kind of what we're trying to do is have options based on these sort of standards that we develop, and that's, that's exactly what you described, I think, is a good solution for for a project like this. Um, you know, not to say that alleys don't have some downsides, um, it kind of takes away your backyard, but um, but again, that's sort of up to the developer to kind of decide based on the standards.
Um, Jeff, I wanted to say a few things.
Please.
Um, we'll get to neighborhood design in a minute, but, you know, it's, there's some differences when you're looking at at one parcel versus a row of them. So, you know, this this um is kind of nice to have a narrow lot in that you're looking at sort of the the short end of the house. Um, but when you get a whole row of those, you, all of a sudden, then you have a wall of that rather than um the the kind of good part about looking at the at the the narrow part of the house. Um, on the right hand side, you've got that setback, which means that when you look at a row of those, you start to get some modulation in what becomes a street wall. Um, and, you know, we'll talk about neighborhood design in a minute, but I think it's always important, uh, when we're thinking of these as as developments, um, that that these things don't read in isolation. Um, and people have been talking about um about the the flexibility or variation. I think especially as Samamish has been developing, um, the easier lots to develop, that flexibility is really important, that it's a lot easier with this flat imaginary site than when you get something that's got, you know, a drop off or, you know, some wonderful trees to save. So I think um that having some flexibility and kind of understanding what we want in the abstract, but making sure that the developments really fit for the site conditions is something we really want to pay close attention to.
Yeah, thanks, Leslie. Um, and then I think, you know, another, another iteration, you brought up the tree farm earlier. I mean, one of the things that's nice about the tree farm, uh, aside from it being really wooded, is, you know, the larger lots afford you some design flexibility around the parking, right? So the wider driveway doesn't have as much of an impact. You could even have your garage door on the side and have this more look like part of the house, you don't even necessarily see the garage. So I think, you know, there's appropriate ways to kind of minimize the impacts of of parking, um, you know, depending on what type of lot and and home, you know, people want to develop, and, um, you know, I think we can provide appropriate options regardless of the path that that they choose. All right. So um moving on, uh, next topic, which we uh previewed a little bit in the diagram on the highcroft, but this issue of arterial frontages, um, and as I said earlier, in other communities, we found that, you know, the 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 ability to to see it really impacts uh people's perception of a project, uh, even projects that we thought were more well-designed than maybe others, people tended to like the ones they couldn't see regardless of what was what was inside. Um, so this map just shows from the city's G I S, um, the arterials in the city. Um, there's three classes, major, minor, and collector, and maybe we uh consider some differentiation in terms of the frontages that would be allowed. Um, this would obviously apply more towards subdivisions or new neighborhoods. Existing lots, because they're existing lots, we would sort of have less uh flexibility in terms of what we could dictate, um, but I still think there there are some criteria that we could develop related to setbacks, orientation of homes, and things like that for existing lots. Um, so we've put together these diagrams that show kind of existing frontages, and um, you know, we wanted to have a discussion with you around, you know, if we were going to list the type of frontages that we want to permit, you know, what are the ones that we most like, right? So I think one that uh most people seem to like a lot is the forested buffer. Um, I believe this is a model of a part of the tree farm. Um, this can be integrated with a trail, um, it could have some, you know, low level fencing, um, but it's essentially a a pretty wide, uh, natural forested buffer, um, that, you know, is really kind of part of the essential character of Samamish. Um, so when there are major projects that are developed, you know, this could be one of the things that could be permitted, and I think something like this, you know, is worth the trade off potentially for a little bit smaller, you know, lot size, back to the kind of discussion around open space. Um, another one that uh we see frequently is either the side of the house or the back of the house is facing the arterial. Um, these can come in different forms, but this is one we tend not to like as much. One, I think, because of the close proximity to the arterial can be awkward, um, and it's it's the side or again, the rear of the home. Um, the highcroft is an example where you have not only the rear of the home, but you also have the elevation issue in the wall, so it's sort of a a double whammy on that one. Uh, but I think this is one we would either try to move away from, or if there was a side kind of yard, that there would be something like a a more of a landscape buffer or a forested buffer between that. So those are two existing ones. Um, another one here on the left would be open space, so integrating open space, whether it's recreation area or or other types of passive open space. Um, this is similar to the example a lot for the lowells. Um, this is one we we think is appropriate and can be a nice visual piece along those This example on the right is is very similar to the highcroft. Um, again, it's the very tall walls and the backs of the homes fronting right along the arterial, and I think this is one um that we would try to avoid in the future, certainly, and, you know, again, try to have something like a forest or really nice landscaping. Um, you know, some appropriate fencing could be okay, um, if integrated with landscaping well. Um, but this is, I think, again, one that we would want to probably move away from, but interested in hearing from the commission on that. Um, stormwater ponds are another popular one. Um, you know, we don't think there'll be necessarily a lot of new large ponds developed, but uh this is one on, I think, Ace, um, that we actually like quite a bit. It has a very kind of naturalistic feel, it's got kind of a split rail fence along it, um, and so it's functional as a stormwater facility, but it's a very nice visual kind of passive open space amenity. Uh, so to the extent that a stormwater pond is developed along an arterial, it would have to be designed, um, you know, if if there's agreement on this, um, something like this, it wouldn't just be a deep pit of water with a chain link fence around it. There are some examples of that as well. Uh, landscape um is another one we think has merits. Um, again, it i- if it's an area that's not already forested, I think forested would be preferred, right? Why cut down forest and and create new landscape if you can keep what's there in a natural condition? Um, but this, I think, is something that could be very appropriate uh for frontages on arterials. Um, another one is what we're calling front, and uh there are some examples of this in the community. Um, and so along the arterial, you wouldn't want to allow direct driveways because of the, you know, traffic conflicts. Um, but to the extent that this is like an existing lot and there is no opportunity to do any of the other techniques, um, having the, at least the home oriented rather than the backyard to the street, but have the access either on the side or the rear of the home, um, I think is better aesthetically, um, you know, than having sort of the side or the rear um uh facing. Uh, this one is uh just, it's similar to the other uh one I showed earlier with the retaining wall, except the homes have been flipped to face um to face the arterial. I think it's a little bit better. Again, I think there's just close proximity of the building to the arterial should be avoided where possible, but in cases where they're existing lots, again, I think flipping the homes and having the fronts facing, as well as uh doing things like if it's a slope site, you know, designing it to minimize the walls, having other requirements or standards for landscaping, um, where walls are necessary, and, uh, you know, where possible, designing the homes to fit into a slope site as opposed to manipulating the site to build a a flat home. All right, I'll I'll just stop there for a second and see if there's any questions or comments on any of those, but I think the policy question is, you know, which of these frontages do we think are appropriate um and and should be permitted in in the code uh going forward to kind of mitigate some of the the projects that have happened recently um with some of those awkward frontages along the arterials?
It would be my opinion that anything with like a a retaining wall or something kind of large and grand um in main public view would be omitted.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would add a couple of things here. One, um, you know, the the nice landscape buffer that you showed in a few of these is great, may not always be possible, or, you know, sometimes it just, it's a struggle to do something that looks quite that nice. Um, but one thing that we haven't really talked about much here is that, you know, if there's a variety of shapes and sizes of houses and up against the arterial, you have some kind of limitation, and I'm not sure what that would look like, but let's just say, just for point of conversation, that up against the arterial, you can only have one floor above grade. You start to be able to then reduce the the need for extensive buffering or extensive, you know, if you have three floors that are up on top of a hill, obviously, that's a much different situation than if you have one floor that um is on the existing grade. And then if you have some buffering, some side yard buffering landscaping, that's a lot easier to deal with and might actually be buildable in in a way that people would accept. Um, so anyway, I just think that there's, there's a few nuances to the to the way that, you know, to make this work in the real world, so people will actually do it, and and some of it may be on the the limitations on what you can build um up next to the buffer, not just completely saying you can't build anything here, you have to build a massive buffer, but saying if you're going to build here, here are some more restrictive limitations against the arterial.
Yeah, I I agree, great comments. And that could help on existing lots and in other situations where you you can't do one of these other options, yeah. Good idea.
Just have a question on the stormwater. Do we have any inputs from, you know, current residents in whose development these stormwaters are there, I mean, with respect to frogs and other natural, you know, animals that come in? Is this even, you know, um, recommended, especially when it comes to arterial space, you know, spaces? That the wildlife, would it cause any problems if you build such, you know, big ponds and and so on?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't have any specific information on that, but I um I could, I could just say from my experience visiting this site, I mean, there is, it's hard to tell here, but there is quite a distance there. Um, so it's, it's maybe not as close as it appears there, but I I don't, I don't have any direct information on that, but it's something we could try to look into.
I I would say that my my personal preference would be more towards kind of the landscape um side of things, just from the standpoint that the uh trees that are there would kind of prevent or present a bit of a a visual barrier to whatever's kind of behind that development, uh, depending on how it's oriented. With a stormwater retention, you you basically just look straight across it and you see whatever, whatever's there.
Yeah. Okay, that makes sense. I will move on. Move my screen here. Uh, so uh we want to talk a little bit now about sort of house design as it relates to building on slopes, and uh, don't be too alarmed, these are extreme examples, but um, just mainly. And don't be too alarmed, these are extreme examples, but just mainly to have effect. We don't expect, you know, every home to be built as elaborate as some of these, but they, they are, I think, are really good illustrations of, of some of the concepts for how you build on a slope site. And I think, you know, the most simple one is if you have a slope site and you're designing your house and your site to be flat, then you're already sort of outside, I think, what should be happening. So, you know, designing in this example, where you sort of use multiple floors as a way to sort of bridge the gap between lower and higher parts of the site is a really good, I think, approach and one that David brought up earlier. These other ones, you know, again, the takeaway is just that the home is designed specifically to fit the site. The site is not, you know, mass graded and, you know, pick for flat home styles that you can put on it. So I think there's kind of just a simple sort of set of design guidance that could help, you know, steer us more towards, again, designing the building to fit the site as opposed to vice versa. And then Mark, Chair Baupman, this is, you know, kind of, I think, what you were trying to intend. Again, this is a different type of environment, you know, in Arizona or something, but you can see that the, the home was deliberately designed on a top of the hillside, but to sort of blend in and minimize that sort of visual impact of that development. And I think this is a pretty good example of that. There's, I think, a version of that that could, could work really well in Sumamish and avoid some of those issues from developments like the highcroft, you know, that, that really stand out along those arterial frontages. And then these are some more other examples that deal primarily with how parking is dealt with, but also there is some use of multiple floors here. Again, this is using kind of the basement and, and walls to kind of carve out the driveway and deal with a bit of a slope site. These properties have recessed parking. This isn't a great example because there's three cars kind of prominently there, but there is the ability, again, to kind of tuck the parking back on the side and there's pros and cons of that. This, I think, actually is one of those homes in the laurels. Again, maybe instead of this driveway, it's actually an alley and this is grass. I think that would have the same kind of intended effect of kind of minimizing parking. And then this one, you know, is, is in the front yard, but it's fairly narrow and there's landscaping. And so I think, you know, it doesn't necessarily have as much of an impact as it might, even though it is a front yard kind of parking situation. And the fact it doesn't have a garage, which, you know, I think most homes are going to have a garage, so it's probably not that, the best example in that regard. But again, just kind of showing examples of how parking could be dealt with. And of course, the alley loaded option is also, is also there. Okay, any questions on that? And then I'm going to have Leslie go over some kind of high level design criteria that we developed or she developed and we first previewed with the community advisory group. So any questions on either of these groups of images here or here? Okay.
Jeff, stay on that one just for a second. Because I think the parking and the entry go hand in hand. And this, this is easier when you've got a larger lot. The smaller the lots get, the harder it is to deal with a car and an entry. But I think one of the things that's pleasing about most of these is that you can actually tell where the entry is. And when you get to a density where all you've got is the parking, sometimes it's not even possible to find the front door without working at it. So a lot of these things are related. Yeah, okay, let's go on to the next one. So thinking about these really at the neighborhood scale, we went and looked at your comp plan, which we take very seriously because a lot of thought goes into that and trying to decide what the community really cares about. So we want to pay close attention to that so that these regulations are designed to as much as possible make that vision come to life with new development in the community. So, you know, we asked, well, what, what does Sumamish care about? And one of the things that we see both in the comprehensive plan and from the input that we've got is that, and we're Northwesterners, we love the ecological function of that land, you know, and that becomes even more precious as things get built out, that there are these remnants of habitat and forested area. So these are some things that we would like to put out there for your input to see if these things resonate with you and that these are the things that we should aim for when we're, we're making these regulatory kind of moves. So one is that site planning really responds to the form of the land and the major vegetation and the kind of systems actually that David mentioned earlier, especially on these, these developments more so, but even, even with, with the single infill lots, thinking about how they fit into these systems of transportation, of pathways, of habitat, of hydrology. How does it fit in? And instead of really having their way with the site, the developers would really have to lessen the impact of the development by being really more responsive rather than fitting it to what's easiest to build. So tree retention is a priority that we have heard about. And I think all of these things have to be done in a way that really has some science behind them. So you don't want to leave a couple of sticks of trees with a lot of vegetation at the top because they're just going to come down in your house. So I think, you know, these, these groupings of, of vegetation have some importance. So not just the day that the, the house is sold, but thinking longer terms that those trees are in a healthy condition, leaving enough room for their roots so that the trees will stay there longer term. Thinking about stormwater should be integral in how the whole project is designed, not an afterthought. So especially if you've got preferences about whether the, the water is taken care of in a, in an open pond versus some, you know, green infrastructure that has a different look to it, you know, we can think about that. But again, understanding the system in which the sites are sitting and what the hydrology is of that site. The stormwater facilities wherever we can, whether they are open water or green infrastructure, these can and should be visual amenities for the community. They don't have to be ugly. And really, I think the best designs take what is unique about a site or has character or is quirky and highlight those. So if you've got something that's a special tree or an outcropping, that, those could actually be highlighted with the design. So how do we make sure that the design of these homes, residences or groupings of homes really are fitting as best they can into the natural and built and hydrological environmental context of the site? Jeff, do you want to talk about that one or just keep rolling?
You can, sorry, I was muted. Yeah, you can keep rolling and then we'll open it up for discussion after you go through all three.
Okay, great. So this plays into some of the discussions that have already occurred. The buffers, you know, not only are those buffers good for everybody that drives along the street, nobody really wants their bedroom, you know, lights shining on the arterial. You know, a lot of these landscapes, and actually the highcroft is one where they just threw some evergreen trees that are not natives, that the landscaping really should be designed to work with, with our climate and with the character. It's also good for habitat and we've, we've definitely gotten input that habitat is something we care about. The tall walls are something we've heard that people really, really hate, the looming houses. Again, this really is mostly because the site is not thoughtfully done. There are ways, as a matter of fact, in the first development that we showed, which none of these are perfect, by the way, they're just really great to be able to walk out to something and say, we like this, we don't like that. They're really learning opportunities. Some of those walls were taken up between the backyards in a way that actually I think worked pretty well. So again, just thoughtful understanding of the particular issues and geographies of the site. Fencing is, you know, not so bad in itself, but when it's the only thing there between you and everything else, it's, it's long, it's boring, it's redundant, it doesn't feel like it's an integrated site. So fencing is fine, but it really needs to work with landscape. Yeah, and I think what we care about most, we're not telling how somebody, you know, to have three bathrooms or, you know, the, the things that, that are in the homes themselves are really less of what we care about, but we do care about that public interface. How does this development, how does this home affect the public that is on these public rights of ways that it's part of your daily route? You know, so what, what does that frontage look like? We care about that frontage because it is part of the public realm and that's something that really is, is a part of our scope. Okay, next, Jeff. We also heard the idea of being a well-connected community. This also ties into being family friendly. The idea of kids being able to bike or walk to school is really great. And also, this is another thing that requires some systems thinking. There is nothing fantastic about a three block bike lane, trails that don't go anywhere, et cetera. So I think part of this is incumbent upon the city to kind of understand what they want from a system standpoint. It makes it a lot easier for developers to come in and know what kind of connectivity you're looking for, whether it's a trail system, a park system or the sewers. Yeah, neighborhood streets, and you've got a lot of really good examples of, you know, good, bad and different. So there's a real learning laboratory you've already got about, you know, how wider streets make people drive faster. So again, these things, there's no one answer. Part of it is how many vehicles you've got on the street. You know, you've got a lot of cul-de-sac conditions that don't need to be too wide. So anyway, we want to really have a clear understanding of what is most benefit to these neighborhoods. Yeah, space to spend time. There are good examples of really usable space for the community. We've also heard that some of these smaller parks aren't really used that much. So, you know, how can we best use the land that is devoted to public use? And it's also a way for neighbors to get to know each other and share their neighborhood. The last one there is the 15-minute neighborhood, which I imagine most of you guys have heard. It's, it's definitely a new and great thing. And it kind of honestly goes against a lot of the thinking about zoning that's been going on for the last several decades, that we have very successfully segregated all kinds of uses. And it means, you know, your kid can't walk to go get the ice cream at the corner store that used to be a thing. So I think it's, it's worth thinking about what that means in terms of uses. Also, COVID has rekindled how we do things. We all pretty much are sitting in our home office. So I think the idea of what a 15 neighborhood, 15-minute neighborhood would look like, what that means for connectivity, what that means for uses and their impacts is something that we should consider and be a little bit forward thinking on. So people's thoughts on these issues, the sort of values and neighborhood scale of, of thinking?
Anybody have anything?
Josh, I guess for the most part, I think that you've identified some very good items and all those bullet points. So I'll only speak to the one that I had a bit of a negative reaction to and not because the aspiration or the goal is bad, but because I don't feel that it's realistic given where we are in Sumamish, and that's the 15-minute neighborhood. I live not that far away from the QFC and there's no way I can walk there. Right in Kohani, there's a huge shopping center and I can't walk there in 15 minutes, but I'm not that far away. And I don't know how, given our build out, that that sort of thing is going to be possible. I understand the, the goal and how beneficial it can be, especially if it's planned for from the ground up or if a neighborhood is being really redeveloped, but we already have a massive traffic problem and if we're spreading out, you know, those sort of amenities like that, someone's going to have to hop from one place to another and add more trips. So I just don't know that that's that realistic for how Sumamish is already being built out. So everything else I thought was pretty good, that's the only one I had a bit of a negative reaction to and not because the goal is bad.
I would piggyback on that and say that when we look at the available areas to develop, do we want to allocate more of those to developing services that could be utilized within that 15-minute neighborhood as opposed to housing?
You know, I think it, it might be worth just keeping a little bit of an open mind on this for the moment and we may not get there. But there's a lot of interesting stuff that's been going on now about, you know, small businesses that are really designed to serve the neighborhood so you don't have to get in your car and drive the safe way. I mean, I totally understand your point, but I think there's some new thinking on it and I think it would be worth just looking at and we can decide to not go there, but it might be worth just thinking about it a little bit before we discard it.
So are you, are you talking specifically about, I want to say it's like King County's takeout foodery thing that's going on right now where you can, I think there's like up to 100 permits available for people who want to do home-based food businesses, whether that's, you know, making some sort of craft beer or, you know, particular type of, you know, whatever and you're not available to sit down and eat there, but you can pull up, grab your order and then go? Is that what you're talking about?
That would be the kind of thing. Right now, there's a bunch of, of different places all around the country that are finding people wanting to do some things in, in what was a very limited use of just single families. So, you know, I don't know whether those are good ideas for, for your neighborhoods or not, but there is some interesting things going on out there that we can take a look at just to at least know that they're going on.
I was going to add, actually, Josh, you stated almost exactly what I was going to say, so, you know, second what you were saying. I would add, I'm interested as we get into thinking about how the code would be stated, how we would actually accomplish the connected, like the more the systems thinking. That would be awesome, but sort of like the 15-minute neighborhood has a real challenge. So those are the comments that I would add.
Great, thanks.
I have a question here, sorry. Both for you, Jeff and Leslie. You know, these attributes that you say are high level goals, is there a priority to that? Would you not, you know, the survey or was it just sort of a people weight edge? And then my second question to this is, everything that we've talked about till now, since we started the meeting, is this just for single family homes? Is that only a lens that we're looking at? And how is the question of affordability, you know, housing for everyone, senior housing, you know, taking care of our different disabled people, where are we, how are we accommodating those kind of considerations in these conversations?
I'm really glad you brought that up. That's a great question. These are not prioritized. I think one of the things to, to kind of reiterate is that different, different sites are going to have different things that would be priorities for that site. So if you are in a site between, say, two trail systems, then that's definitely a priority for that particular development. Maybe you're not, and so maybe that's not a priority there. If you don't have any topography on your site, you'd probably have a different set of priorities for these goals than otherwise. So it's really kind of trying to spell out ideally what we would like to see in developments so that we've covered all the kinds of things that apply to different situations. Affordability is a really interesting issue and, and there is no one answer to any of these. You know, the, the single family neighborhoods are basically very expensive homes. And although everybody loves the tree farm, certainly not everybody who wants to live in Sumamish or even like your son or your mother-in-law, whoever, the fireman who works there, aren't going to be able to afford those houses. So there are a lot of really interesting questions there. Jeff did bring up an interesting thing where, you know, the ADUs are something that people are looking at more and more. Not only does that provide affordable housing for somebody, but it also means that a home buyer can have another source of revenue. So some things that didn't used to be allowed in single family neighborhoods are being more common. So I think there's a whole question about affordability and even though it's really nice to have large lots, that really works against the, the goal of affordability. And I think another reason that prioritization is difficult is a lot of these goals may find there's some friction between them. there's some friction between them. So you can't keep the forest and have affordable housing for everything. So it's really a lot of push and pull and trying to understand at a high level what you want so that those goals get accomplished in the best ways, in a site-dependent way.
And I probably would like to get some more information just about the environmental impact of having single-family homes, and, you know, how does that affect the overall ecology of our region? And another point that I'd like to make, you know, seeing the family-friendly neighborhoods here, I think, as we said, the pandemic has really, you know, shown us that families is not just parents with young kids. We also have multi-generational homes with older parents, and, you know, so that is also in the mix of what Sammamish is about as well. So I think it would be, that would be a lens that I would like to look at things as well, with, you know, senior residents or older parents who are also.
Great, thank you.
Great comments. I'll just add a couple of things, you know, related, a couple of things we talked about with the community advisor group was, of course, affordability, but also just the diversity in housing types. So, you know, the city allows accessory dwelling units, it has allowances for duplexes, but those tend not to get built. So there could be ways to sort of incentivize those, both within the base set of standards, but also perhaps in the planned development standards as well, which could provide, you know, things like potentially density bonuses or other incentives for getting more diversity of housing types. And then to your question around, are we only dealing with single-family homes? No, we are dealing with all of the residential districts from R1 through, I think, R12. But one of the, let me just go, I have a couple of maps here that we have in the background to refer to. So if you look at the distribution of land in Sammamish, you have your R1 district, you have your R4 district, your R6 district, your R8 district, your R12, and your R18. So just looking at it from a land standpoint, those single-family districts are the majority of the land area, and so that's where we've been focusing, I guess, most of our energy. But those other districts are definitely included in this project. And then the last point I'll make around the 15-minute neighborhood, the term's probably a little misleading, it probably implies, you know, creating like an urban district, you know, like Ballard or something, where you can walk, you know, to everywhere. And that wasn't necessarily, I think, what we were thinking. I think we were just putting the idea out there. It could be, you know, under your planned development code, as an incentive, you know, for larger projects, maybe you could build a coffee shop or, you know, something, it could be something very small-scale. It doesn't necessarily mean, you know, everyone's going to walk to Safeway or QFC because, you know, how do you carry the groceries anyways? But it could be just really, really very small or targeted stuff, you know, if there's a desire, and if there's not, then certainly we don't need to continue talking about it.
Can I make just a couple of quick design comments?
Please.
Maybe they're pretty small ones, but, you know, one thing I think that, excuse me, one of the things we do see is the extreme difference in a newly constructed neighborhood right next to an existing neighborhood. And that has certainly created some of the consternation, I think, with existing residents in the city, is that, you know, you look at those dramatic differences that get created side by side with no effort to provide any level of transition, or even sometimes any buffer between them. And you end up with, you know, Highcroft is an example where, I don't know if it's still there or not, but they built a whole neighborhood with one entrance on the 228th and a back entrance and a back connection out the back to, I don't look what the road is, 235th or something. And they had to put up three bollards blocking any traffic to get through there because the existing residents didn't want anything to do with the connection to that new neighborhood. And I think that's kind of a testament to how sometimes the existing residents are frustrated by what gets built right next to them because it's so out of character. I know another neighborhood where, it was an old neighborhood with all of the houses with driveways onto the kind of the arterial, sort of small arterial, and what was built right next to them was a bunch of giant houses on off roads, and there was no driveways onto the main road that was just 15 feet away from the old houses. And so, of course, everybody drove through there at 40 miles an hour. Again, no transition between existing and new, and no effort to make any transition. So I think that needs to be a part of this discussion as well in many different respects. The other comment is that I think that we need to be thoughtful in talking about the size of streets and the design of streets. I understand, empathize, and actually like the idea of streets that are a bit smaller to kind of reduce the traffic problems, which we have lots of, with people speeding in neighborhoods. I also, though, think we see a lot of neighborhoods where I think that because the streets are so small, it's hard for me to envision that a fire truck can get in there, or a garbage truck, or frankly, even an Amazon delivery vehicle. I mean, it becomes almost too restrictive, and so it becomes, it almost creates its own set of problems when you do that, because now everybody's putting their garbage cans in one place, and that creates a mess, and, you know, a fire truck can't get in there. And so there needs to be balance between those two things, between the desire for the character that goes with the smaller, you know, kind of a intimate-feeling road, and the functionality that the services of the community need to have. Both of those feel like design things to me, as I thought I'd mentioned them here.
Yeah, yeah, I completely agree with you on both of those. Yeah, great comments. We'll make sure we incorporate that going forward. Anyone else? We move on? We just have one more set of slides, and then maybe we could transition to the Word document or take a break if there's a desire to do that.
Yeah, let's plan to take a break after this set of slides.
Okay. So I won't go into these in detail, but this is just kind of a summary of some of the, some of the things that we highlighted in the previous slides in terms of kind of the direction we might head with some of the code stuff. So, you know, again, new subdivisions or neighborhood design standards, we would have some potential requirements related to, or criteria related to connectivity for streets and infrastructure. And again, I think we talked about this previously, there are pros and cons to street connectivity. You know, connecting streets obviously allows for shorter distances and greater dispersion of traffic, you know, so everyone's not having to rely on the arterials. At the same time, I know it's very attractive to live on a dead-end street because there's a, you know, maybe a greater feeling of safety and security. So, you know, like the issue of how do you design your streets, you know, how you connect them, I think, you know, requires a bit of a nuanced approach. But we do think there's opportunities to improve connectivity, if not full street connections, you know, bike and pedestrian connections or trail connections. We're not really going to touch the street design standards, but we're just going to figure out maybe some criteria for how they are applied. So to your point, we don't want streets too narrow, we don't want streets too wide, we don't want not enough parking, we don't want too much parking. So, you know, based on what's being developed, you know, what makes sense, right? A project like the tree farm, for example, probably doesn't need a lot of street parking, right? A project that has a bunch of, you know, smaller lots probably, you know, would have more of a need for that street parking. So what are those criteria to figure out what's appropriate? Tree protection standards, you know, the cities are, they've got a lot of standards in place, but we do have some ideas on how we could strengthen those, primarily related to preemptive clearing and grading that happens. We have some ideas and thoughts for that. The open space requirements, the arterial frontages, and of course, this overall goal for protection and integration of natural features. We haven't talked a lot about the planned development standards, but again, this would be sort of an opt-in to kind of situation that would provide more flexibility in design, but theoretically produce greater benefits to the community. And so I'm sure in the future, we'll have a meeting or part of a meeting that's sort of focused on that. Some of the concepts we're thinking about for residential site design, again, potentially a floor-to-area ratio limit, you want a bigger home, you got to have a bigger lot, is essentially what that equates to. Driveway frontage limits, you want a wider driveway, you got to have a wider lot, you want a narrower lot, and you got to, you know, pick these other options. Some fairly minimal landscape design requirements, primarily just dealing with the frontages, you know, something that's not particularly onerous for single-family homeowners, and that would be applied mainly for new subdivisions, you know, not existing lots. How you deal with parking, potential encouraging the use of alleys where appropriate, again, not requiring it. Building height measurements, particularly related to slopes, so dealing with segments so that you can sort of step the building down the slope, whether it's up slope or down slope. And then having more requirements for what we're calling concept plan review, or, you know, Mary Victor brought up in the public comment period, project guidance, which we talked about at our last meeting, and that's something that we're going to make more of a requirement for more projects. And for all the reasons that she described, we think that's a really good thing to get people in early before they get into detailed design. All right, a couple of last things on the Unified Development Code, and then we can take a break. So, you know, the Unified Development Code is going to pull together all of the development-related sections of the municipal code. We have put together a high-level outline for what we think that could look like. So right now, a lot of these sections are individual titles, and it's very confusing and difficult to navigate the code. So we think it could start off with a preface or a user guide, you know, here's what's in the code, here's how you use it, maybe there's some information on, you know, how to go look at the comprehensive plan and the city's vision, you know, starting to create that culture of really, you know, good development and quality development that's expected in Sammamish. 21, the next section would just deal with your land use and zoning, which is a lot of your existing code. And then we thought the next one, and we could flip these around, you know, I'm not sure whether zoning should go first or environment should go next, but given the emphasis on protection of the environment and sustainability, we thought that this section would be good to have upfront. This would combine things like critical areas, your SEPA review, perhaps some things around stormwater, maybe tree retention, you know, all of those things that sort of get at protection and integration of the natural environment. Then we go to neighborhood design, which would be your, you know, your subdivision-type criteria, then we would go to your site design and development standards. So we're kind of trying to follow the path that you would go in sort of thinking about your project as you move through the process. We're going to pull in the town center code, but at least currently, we're not going to make any edits to that. There are some, I think, examples in the town center code that we're trying to bring in, at least conceptually, into other parts of the code, but for various reasons, we're not going to do any amendments to the town center code right now. Similarly, public works standards get brought in and referenced, but no changes to those buildings in construction. And then finally, the administrative procedures, which talk about application types and fines and enforcement and all of those sorts of things. And then on the right is just an example of potentially the new numbering system. So as we pull this all together, some of the sections may shift around, but we're going to have a new, consistent sort of numbering system so things are easy to find and locate in the code. As we talked about last time, we're looking to create this standalone code document with a high level of, you know, graphic design and use of graphics. We've put together some fonts for different heading styles and some colors, similar to the colors you've seen in the presentation tonight that we can use in the design of that, which will give it a really kind of unique look and feel and be easy to navigate and very consistent in terms of the materials and how they're presented. We started to put together some kind of early concepts for kind of giving the code an identity. We have it called the city code right now, but we obviously need to come up with something that's more specific. It could be simply the Unified Development Code, the Land Development Code, or something that's more unique, like the Buffalo Green Code example. We'd be really interested in your input on that. We have developed a logo that could work in different colors and formats, sort of trying to sort of bring together the ideas of development and natural environment and connection to the lake and things like that, that sort of, again, try to illustrate what's desired in the community. But we, you know, of course, love your feedback and input on this. And then for some of the sections, particularly for each of the zoning districts, we are going to add, in addition to the other, some of the other graphics we showed you, like the arterial frontages, we would add these simple kind of site plan diagrams that would then be connected to the specific standards for each district. There might be, you know, a table for each district that has all of the standards, or it could be broken up as it's shown here where it's by district, but it's just a little bit easier for people to understand how the dimensions are applied and can set the precedent for future graphic, more graphics to be added in the future, you know, during future phases of code updates. And then this is just, you know, again, one other example for how you might illustrate some of the lot standards as well. And that's it. We have a bunch of maps and some of the graphics that we've shown you previously in the back if we need to refer to them at all, but at this point, if there's questions on the Unified Development Code, we can take them. Otherwise, turn it back over to you, Chair Faucon.
Anybody have any comments? Recommended fonts? Or Josh is going to recommend an alternative font?
I am not going to do that. I was just going to recommend or suggest maybe go watch the portion of the council meeting, a couple of council meetings ago, where they were talking about the website design, logo and colors, and then revisit your thoughts there after doing that. That's my only comment. You might get some pushback in that area, but that's it.
Yeah, sure thing. We're happy, we'll take a look at that, and of course, we want to be consistent. So if the city's, you know, developing their own, you know, brand or new colors and fonts, then, you know, we'd love to integrate with that. So we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, I would like to suggest that we take a break. Let's make it about 12 minutes. That would put us back at 7:30. Any objections to that? Okay, we'll take a break and be back at 7:30 sharp. Thanks, see you in about 10 minutes.
Sounds good.
Let's go.
All right. So we made it through the presentation, and now I can pull up the document that was sent out with the packet, and we can just kind of go through the topics and have a discussion in a little more detail. Let me share my screen here. So these are the red, the high-priority topics. And, you know, some of these we covered in the presentation more than others. This one was not really covered much in the presentation. But this is number one, topic number one, and it primarily has to do with infrastructure. So the problem statements, infrastructure is not kept pace with growth, particularly around older subdivisions. This deals with requirements for sewer or not, and we've had discussions with the Water and Sewer District and input from them where they have a desire to work the city on some more specific criteria and preferences for public connections where feasible. And then developers are not accountable for contributions outside of their development, disconnect between the city, Water District, and the city. So there's a number of preferred solutions there in terms of connection requirements, both for new development as well as for existing homes when sewer becomes available, either through an extension by the Water District or by a developer serving a property that happens to also give access to existing properties. There's some things in here related to low-impact development and sustainable site planning techniques, requiring drainage review in areas with concentration of critical areas like Tammerack and Inglewood, or what are referred to as critical drainage areas. And then another one, number nine, which has been discussed quite a bit with the community advisor group. the Community Advisor Group, is, um, related to putting septic systems on sort of existing lots that may have some physical constraints, um, and sort of requiring some upfront conceptual site planning and context analysis that would sort of help identify those issues before they become issues in the field due to construction. Uh, so some of the project, problem examples, the narrative, uh, due to a lack of connection requirements, projects are developed using septic tanks and not connected to the public sewer. There's no mechanism to ensure projects are connected in the future, right? And this plays out in a, in a multitude of ways. Um, so if there, if there are requirements for existing homes to connect, and there could be different criteria, it could be, um, you know, the, when the infrastructure becomes available within a certain distance, there's a requirement. Uh, oftentimes in cities, there's, um, like a two-year window or some sort of window whereby, um, properties would have to connect, whether their septic system, uh, is functioning or has failed. Um, other cities will have requirements, but only if your septic system fails. So, we would be interested in input on sort of what the appropriate approach is for Semamish. Um, and then the, another example is projects in critical areas that develop with septic tanks require greater land disturbance due to the lack of sewer availability and connection requirements. So, you know, in general, trying to enhance or increase the availability of sewer, um, you know, could help minimize some of the challenges on some of these existing lots in those areas with, uh, with physical constraints. Uh, so these issues, um, deal with both, uh, single-family and larger-scale, um, development. And the questions for the commission, should there be a clear preference for public sewer connections for new projects? Should all new subdivisions require connection to public sewer? Uh, should there be a waiver provision available in limited circumstances where sewer may not be, uh, feasible? So, even though it may be a subdivision, there may be some limited circumstances where a community system, a localized community system, uh, could be used, whether those are individual septic, uh, tanks on individual lots, or whether it's a community, uh, system. And then, uh, another one, which is a big one, is should properties be required to connect to the public sewer when it becomes available within 200 feet of the property, uh, regardless of whether the septic system is failing or not? Um, and again, this, this has a big impact on sort of the ability to finance, uh, infrastructure, uh, extensions because of the predictability or lack thereof, um, in terms of the number of connections and connection fees that you would get, um, based on what the requirements are. So, um, that's as far as we've really gotten on that. We have some strategy notes here at the bottom. These just reflect our discussions amongst the consultant team and city staff that we've had at our weekly meetings, um, as well as some of the input we've gotten from the Community Advisor Group and the Water and Sewer District. So, I'll stop there, see if there's questions, comments, discussion.
I have one clarification in terms of community system is...
What, what would come under community systems?
Yeah, a community system would be like a septic, uh, community septic, so it's one septic tank serving multiple, um, homes and then has one drainage field, but they're actually newer, more advanced systems. They're called packaged, uh, MBR system is, is one of them. I don't know exactly what that stands for, but they're almost like mini little treatment plants that can, um, be developed onsite and serve multiple homes, and the technology continues to advance. Um, so, uh, whereas a community septic system usually requires a lot of land because of the size of the drainage field that's required, um, some of these packaged systems do not require that and can be very efficient from a land perspective. So, so that's what we meant. Um, it's sort of like a, a, a community sewer system, but not actually connecting to the public system.
Okay. What's... Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, it would, uh, community septic system is quite different than a more advanced, technically advanced system, so I, I think it's like combining those leads to very different outcomes potentially.
Yes, that is, that's very true.
Uh, what percentage of Semamish has, um, septic system versus what percentage is connected to a, a large sewer system?
Yeah, good, good question. David, do you have a, a sense of that?
Not a, not a statistic that, that I know, although I, I, I do know that the, the goal or objective is to have every property in the city serviced by sewer at some point. Um, we, we have been in, uh, conversations with both the Water and Sewer District and King County separately, King County Public Health, and King County Pub, Public Health, um, the representative we met with, Lynn Schneider, is, is an advocate for, um, these, these more modern, um, and I can't remember what Jeff said, MBR systems or whatever it is, um, and, and she has noted that the technology has evolved, um, fairly well, um, and that we may be in a position where we, we could start to see some of these come online. So, if, the, the, the point that I wanna make here, though, is that if someone was, uh, proposing a development and there was not sewer available, um, they might be able to go into King County Public Health and obtain, uh, permit to build one of these more modern systems per King County Public Health standards, um, and then they would be able to provide that sewer service. Whereas currently, um, sewer service onsite without connection to a public system. Whereas currently, we, we, we see projects that are built where they are putting in interim systems and also putting in dry lines for a future connection at the frontage of the property where the district anticipates a, a, a future hookup occurring. Um, we have some subdivisions where they are double-plumbing the entire division, um, with, with the, the premise that in five to 10 years, there will be a sewer main brought down the road, and they will then have to connect, whereas currently, they are on a, a low-pressure force main, um, system with grinder pumps on each of the homes. So, it adds quite a bit of, uh, infrastructure cost. Uh, so I, I, I guess the question is, it's a policy question here, is, you know, do we, as a group, think that we should have all homes that are being built in the city ultimately hooked up to sewer? Or, um, do we think that if King County Public Health, uh, finds these more modern systems acceptable and comparable, should we there then be allowing those to occur? And I, I, I don't want to play, um, uh, sewer engineer or scientist here, so I, I, I think it's more along the lines of a question of if, if King County Public Health finds these systems satisfactory and, and meeting equivalency of standard, um, to public sewer connection, is it something we should entertain as an alternative? Or should we continue to stick with the, the conventional, uh, piped and plumbed, uh, sewer approach?
Is there a component of what King County is saying based on the fact that Semamish is already nearly at or at its sewage capacity for being able to move waste to Renton, and they're trying to kick the can down the road? Hey, you don't have to connect to our sewer if you can do it better onsite, right? It eliminates their need to go off and fix their infrastructure.
Oh, it's interesting, uh, it's a good, great question. Um, so this conversation that we had with Lynn Schneider at King County Public Health, which is a completely different arm of King County than, uh, King County Natural Resources, um, uh, very different outfit, um, so, so this conversation that we had with her, I think it was last year or sometime, um, was before the, uh, we were even aware of this deficiency that, that Samplat was facing with regard to their conveyance, um, in the north diversion versus the, the south diversion. Um, so I, I, I believe based on that, that, that this really is a simple fact that, that the technology has changed, and King County is, King County Public Health is seeing that there is a, a level of equivalency, uh, with onsite treatment for bundled systems, like meaning not just one individual home, but actually group systems, um, which I think is, I, I wanna make sure that when I say group systems, I mean the modern version of a group system, um, a, as compared to, uh, conveyance off-site. And it's, it's something that, that I, I, I'm interested in exploring more. I'm just curious what the, what the commission's perspective is on that and, you know, what, what we should be focusing on.
Well, I guess, and, and it's kind of a leading question that I'm, that I'm starting with, because if the general consensus is that all homes need to be connected to a public system, but the public system is at capacity and there is no immediate path to remediation, then that means that no more homes can be connected to the immediate, to the existing system, right? So, are we, by, by saying that we want all homes connected, are we creating a de facto stoppage to all new development?
And, and that's, that's, yeah, that's...
A path track, yeah.
Well, we are, we, we are in a moratorium right now for sewer connections in, in the basin that is at capacity. So, you know, we, we are, you, you are correct, that the sewer capacity is an issue that is stopping development. For, based on what we know, there is no immediate fix. There are some interim measures that could be, uh, implemented over time, um, but the, the, the long-term fix, the north diversion, is anywhere from, and, and we'll be hearing from Semamish Plateau, uh, next Tuesday, so if you wanted to tune into the city council meeting, they are going to be doing a presentation on this exact problem, so I, I'd highly recommend anyone here watch that presentation. Uh, I'm, I'm curious myself, and I, you know, what we've heard is it's anywhere from 10 to 30 years for the north diversion to be added back to King County's budget and be constructed to a point where it can accommodate additional flow, um, from that north basin area that, that Samplat is identifying as constrained.
Then, the...
Go ahead, DC, have a follow-up.
No, I was gonna say, would, would then the, would the moratorium that's in the north division end up just pushing all of the, the potential development into the south, right? So then you have an, an asymmetric, um, allocation of resources where now, all of a sudden, all of this development has happened, all of this development is happening in, you know, a, a much smaller geographic area, so, you know, it, it ends up impacting that particular community significantly more.
It's, it's something we're looking at right now. Uh, there's also transportation constraints in different parts of the city, uh, based on, on capacity and, and, um, existing road conditions, et cetera. Uh, so there's a lot to consider here. Um, this might be a topic that we end up putting in, uh, the Development Regs Phase Three, because we may want to do quite a bit of research on this and bring onboard a, a consultant who specializes in this. Uh, I'm not saying that Jeff is, is not a great consultant to work with, just that I don't know that Jeff is a specialist in these types of, of systems, and I, I would wanna understand what the implications are to groundwater, what the implications are to, um, to adding water to, uh, landslide hazard areas. Um, you, you, there are many questions, I think, that, that we would need, um, an, an engineering consultant, like a geotechnical engineer, to come onboard and, and give us some guidance in, you know, where we wanna go with this.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna comment, um, so sewers have been the traditional way of handling, you know, getting away from, um, septic systems, and what's really the issue here is the aquifer and the quality of our groundwater, and sewers are one way to assure that, you know, that's, that's groundwater is kept, uh, you know, solid, pure, so forth. Um, the new technology is interesting, you know, having, you know, more dispersed units can be real positive. We just don't know enough about it. So, I guess, you know, when I read that first question, should it be a clear preference, uh, for public sewer connections? You know, the initial knee-jerk is yes, uh, for the groundwater considerations, but if there isn't, you know, any technology coming in, then we should consider it, uh, whether that means waiting to Phase Three or allowing flexibility based on certain criteria that the technology meets, uh, that can be written in, uh, may be another way to do that. Uh, but, but having that flexibility as technology changes is probably a good thing. Uh, falling back on septic systems, isn't that...
So, one, one quick comment, MBR is membrane bioreactor, and my limited knowledge of it is it's a technology that's been used at a larger scale than it seems like what we're talking about here, but that doesn't mean it's not been scaled down, probably was what's happened. Um, I would o, offer just a thought of ca, some caution. We have homeowners associations that can't even figure out how to scrape enough money together to prune their bushes. Um, a membrane bioreactor requires regular maintenance and service and care and feeding, and so, you know, a sewer system, um, as long as it's designed to flow downhill, pretty much works until somebody digs up the pipe. So, um, you know, I think it's just new technology, we should absolutely allow for those opportunities to come up when they make sense, but we should also be cautious about making sure that for the community, we don't create a situation that just then rises to become a problem later.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, I agree with all those comments. Um, and I think we were, we were thinking of it more as, uh, you know, potential allowance, maybe where sewer is infeasible, not necessarily, uh, moving away from, from sewer as the primary approach. We, we did just do a project and we, um, had an engineer that, that did some pricing, uh, for an area that we were working on a plan, and we looked at the, the MBR system versus, it might have been something like, it was a several-mile connection to the sewer plant 'cause of how far the area is from the treatment plant, and even at that great distance, um, and in a city where, again, none of those homes that would now be, uh, have access to sewer were required to hook up, and it was still much, much, much cheaper to, to do the sewer connection. So, I think there will probably always be a preference for that, and, and I think it's just kind of a, a matter of figuring out to what extent, if any, of these, these newer technologies, you know, fit into that or not. And I think it's not only the issue of sewer, but it's, it's around the growth patterns and, and what some of these dynamics do to where growth occurs and, and, and how it occurs, so. Right? Any other comments, or should we move on to the next one?
Uh, just a quick comment. I, um, think we should probably have our own, uh, sewer expert come in and kind of teach us a little bit more about this. There's a lot that goes into what we're discussing. There's a lot of financial burden that can be placed on some people, and we don't know the true impact of what we're, what our policy guidance here could be. I also don't view King County as Semamish's advocate, so King County checking the box and saying it's okay, I don't know necessarily means that it's okay for Semamish or people in Semamish would be necessarily okay with it either. So, I think this is one where we need to take a lot more time and careful study on before we give some policy guidance on, because I don't know enough to give direction here, and, you know, that's my comment.
So, I'm, I'm hearing that this probably is a candidate for Phase Three, because that's an additional budget item and additional time to bring that consultant in, and, um, you just wanna make sure that we're doing it right, um, and it's, it's a little different than a zoning control. It's, it's a public service, so just wanna make sure we're, we're properly analyzing it.
Yeah.
One thing, too, I think, is that when I read this, a lot of it seems to be trying to, I shouldn't say it that way, it can come across as creating a, um, argument for or against sewers. I don't think anybody's really against sewers. It really needs to be framed as, should we continue, you know, how, how aggressive should we be against allowing septic systems to be created that are new and/or continue to function that are existing? That's really what this is about, is septic systems. It shouldn't be about sewers or about new technology or about, you know, that's gonna come into the conversation, but really, the reason for this is because septic systems have some significant downsides, and so we need to figure out to what extent we wanna be anti-septic. That's kinda what it comes down to.
Yep. Very well stated, completely agree. Um, okay, any final thoughts? Otherwise, we'll move to the next. Okay, so, topic, um, hopefully, uh, whoever can see my screen. Uh, topic number four really deals with those neighborhood, um, kind of design standards. We've spent a lot of, uh, the presentation going over this topic, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but it's essentially most of those elements that we discussed there. Um, some of the examples and narrative, again, subdivisions are designed using mass creative and, and extensive clearing of trees and vegetation that are inconsistent with the desired character in Sammish. So there's some, you know, policy questions around to what extent mass grading is, is allowed and, and sort of what point in time that occurs, both the grading of individual lots as well as the clearing of trees. There's the issue of connectivity in subdivisions, you know, how, kind of like the discussion around septic tanks, you know, how aggressive do we wanna be or not be regarding connections, both forest streets as well as, you know, trails and bikes and things like that. The issue of arterial frontages, subdivisions are designed with the backs of homes and or large retaining walls facing directly onto arterials with inadequate buffers. And then the last one, which we covered a lot, deals with the open space requirements. And, you know, do we, do we wanna leave it completely open-ended to let the developer decide how much open space they wanna provide, how small the lots are, and sort of what that function of that open space is? Or do we wanna be sort of more intentional around what we allow and, and maybe, you know, putting a little bit more emphasis on, you know, adding open space to individual lots as opposed to centralized open space within the development? So a couple of questions, and there's, there's likely more questions, but should all, related to street connectivity, should all dead-end streets be considered temporary unless there's, until they may be connected or unless the physical connection is determined to be infeasible? So, for example, if you went in to develop a project and had a cul-de-sac, you know, would you prohibit development along the ends of the cul-de-sac so it could be connected unless at the time of development it was determined, look, there's, there's already development that's happened in the area and no connection would be feasible, so therefore that requirement doesn't apply? So I think that's a really important policy question. I think we already covered the arterial frontage types and we got good input on that. But I think the other big question is around the open space and the lot size issue and, you know, whether we wanna have stronger criteria for, for both of those situations. And I'll stop there and open it up for discussion. Comments from anybody?
I will comment that I think that the dead-end street one is, it feels to me like that's probably more complex than what it sounds to be. I mean, I, you know, if we're trying to reduce mass grading, that could certainly create situations where the only available street connection would now, because we haven't graded the site down, be down or up a steep slope. And so, you know, you end up with some competing requirements or objectives. I think that, you know, but the concept of more connectivity for streets and certainly more for trails and, and all of that sort of stuff is absolutely a priority. But it, it should fit within all of the other criteria for design of these subdivisions that are gonna be imposed and, or are, right? I mean, this shouldn't override some, something else that is not intended to override.
Yeah. It should be kind of context sensitive, right? Don't impose a super connected grid on a hilly site or try to force something that just frankly doesn't make sense. Yeah. Well stated.
Well, I think that a subdivision should have more than one way to get in and out. You know, you should have a choice that if the one is blocked up, you can go out the other way.
Yeah, there, there's, there's definitely an emergency, you know, vehicle access issue, you know, if one of them becomes blocked. Sometimes, I think this was the solution in the laurels, you know, you get like a boulevard, so if one side gets blocked, the other doesn't. But then there's just sort of the, you know, the connectivity and sort of travel distances and traffic impacts on arterials. You know, some cities will limit the length of a dead-end street. Others will limit the number of homes on a dead-end street. There are a lot of different sort of approaches to it. And I agree, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's, it really depends on the context of the site. And, and I've also been part of, you know, in my time as a planning director and during permitting review, I've also been involved in projects where a dead-end street was then to be connected to a new project. And I can't think of a project that had more opposition from the folks living on the dead-end street. So, so I do understand that this can become a personal issue and, you know, particularly if you move into an area and you're accustomed to, you know, living on a dead-end street or, or that was what attracted you to, to that project, you know, that can be a hard thing to, to have to deal with. So there's, there's multitude sides of the issue. And it sounds like, you know, we wanna have kind of a balanced approach based on the particulars of the site and the context.
Can we hold? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, quick question. Does this mean that the dead-end streets, it will have one house less or something to make way for the future connectivity? Means, is that how we envision, you know, these dead-end streets to be?
Yes, it has to do with, with what gets built around the cul-de-sac. It also has to do sometimes with the design of the cul-de-sac, because if you develop the cul-de-sac and then you connect the street, typically you wanna get rid of the cul-de-sac or, so that can be a tricky issue. But it, it usually is much more than one home. Probably less so now because of the standards the city put in around property frontages. But if you look at some of the more recent projects, particularly ones that use like driveways for multiple homes, I mean, it could be, I don't even know, six, eight homes at the end of a dead-end street. So it, it, it is, it can be significant.
Can we hold dead-end streets or these like longer driveways with multiple lots to the same standard as the rest of the street? Because I see us getting into a place where we allow a development and a plan to go through. And I, I was mentioning it earlier when we were going through the different slides where, you know, you have streets that are not as wide to accommodate, you know, four or five houses. But then however many years down the road, no pun intended, another development comes up that would want to connect to that, but now there's not the, the physical infrastructure to be able to do that.
Yeah, good question. So, oh, I think the, the multiple homes on a driveway has been eliminated. David, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it has to have frontage on a public or private street. And then, you know, how the street is designed would theoretically be based on, you know, the potential for future connectivity and future traffic, which is maybe a bit difficult to assess when something hasn't been developed. But I think there's a way to at least consider it in the criteria.
So, so we, we've had some scenarios unfold with project design where we would have and we could have achieved a future connection that would have been put in, put, set aside so that it was forward compatible with a future road through, through fare, but that we didn't have any design criteria or standards in our code. And our, our hearing, the, the developer was willing to do it, but when it ended up in hearing in front of the hearing examiner, the hearing examiner told us that we, we couldn't do that because there was no requirement for it to be set aside. It would've just become a piece of right-of-way that we would've held that would not have been developed. And our hearing examiner told us we couldn't do that and it was struck from the design. The most recent project is the Lancaster Big Rock subdivision where the, we, we were, we were trying to consider forward compatibility with any future through fare that might possibly be put in there in the future. If you look at the street network, it, it, it makes some sense that there be a road that goes through there. However, it does require a much larger community conversation before a road is to be established, if at all. If it wasn't established, the right-of-way would've been a great trail connection. But that, that was then removed from the design by the hearing examiner. And now there are going to be homes built there so that, that right-of-way, that future connection is, is now foreclosed and it is no longer possible. So what, what we're looking for is sort of a policy direction from the planning commission and ultimately the city council by way of possible addition to design criteria that enable the staff to look more broadly at how the development fits into the context of the existing community and where there might be a beneficial connection in the future added to set aside and preserve area for that road to be built. Of course, that would have to follow standard public process, design, et cetera. It's not like we're trying to build the road now. We just don't want to foreclose that happening in the future, if that makes sense.
It is my opinion that we should build in the ability to add additional capacity through these developments. So if there's, if there's the ability to, to state very clearly in the code that you need to plan for a second egress or whatever it is that's not blocked by bollards and chains and things like that, right? Like that, that doesn't get us there.
Yeah. That's a good comment. Sorry, go ahead. Actually, David, you had stated to have, you know, the folks in the department be able to take a look at sort of the surrounding developments or, you know, this interconnectedness, which seems to make sense. I'm just wondering the impact on that and, you know, on time and complexity, is that something that would be done relatively early on? How would that get put into the code? Just roughly, I don't, you know, we don't have to get way down into the de, the details, but, you know, which, which it sounded good, how did that, how would that actually come into being?
Yeah. So, so what, what we're, we, you know, as a result of some of these learning experiences with the rules that we've had, we've, we've done what we can with our process, which are things we can change without changing the code. And we started to require a, a far more front-end screening. And, and there was another slide that Jeff had brought up tonight already that talked about more importance, more reliance on early screening and early review of more detailed information. And, and I think the point here is that we wanna do a planning level review of the design before they engage engineering, right? Because what happens is, is if you don't have opportunity to respond to the, the, what's the, what's the right way to put this? The functionality of the design, what ends up happening is that the builder, developer ends up engaging their engineering group and spending a large sum of money and they become, you know, somewhat biased towards that design because they don't wanna have to spend more money redesigning it. So what we're trying to do is catch these things earlier, engage the developer, talk about how it all fits into the context of the existing neighborhoods and street system, trail networks, pedestrian movements, car movements, and, and actually do that planning work early, whereas we had not been doing that historically as a city. And that's why we have some of the designs that we have.
Yeah. So then I just, I don't know if this is a suggestion, but I recall having some of that conversation probably two or three meetings ago about some of the front-end work. And, and so it's not so much should all dead-end streets be considered temporary, it should there be at that early kind of concept phase of the design, this interaction so that the future connectivity can be considered, among other things. So this early involvement with the planning, should that happen? Yes. And maybe as a result of that, there would be, you know, better connectivity if you're, you know, long-term dead-end streets and so forth. So I think it has to do more with the process than this particular element of the design.
So, so I think the, part of that, and something that has to go hand-in-hand with that, is the authority of the staff to tell the developer that they have to do something when it's identified. Because we, we can ask as we may, and in the case of Big Rock Vista, we even were, were able to get the developer to agree to volunteer to do it. But then we got in front of the hearing examiner and somehow it ended up being extracted and removed from the design. And we were scratching our heads trying to figure out what exactly happened here. And the examiner basically cited that we don't have a requirement in the code, we don't have a transportation master plan. What are we asking this builder to do? Just to give up a piece of right-of-way that's gonna sit vacant for an unknown period of time and, and who knows if it'll ever even be built? And, and I, I understand that logic. I see what he's saying. So what I'm trying to, to go for here is can we add something to the code that will give us the authority to obtain that future right-of-way and, and not foreclose it from being established at a later date because we don't have a rule that says we can ask for it?
Yeah. Well stated. And, and also criteria that can tell you when you don't need it, right? And, and it's okay to not require it, I think is also, is also equally important.
Can we also include a provision that retaining walls and rockeries be masked by vegetation? So further a setback and then say, you know, you have to build in another 10 feet or something like that in order to plant some trees so that you're not staring at bricks and rocks?
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that in a variety of, of ways. I mean, we've talked about, you know, just minimizing walls even on individual lots. And then, you know, in situations where it's even larger scale, yeah, integrating landscape with, with that, I think, yeah, absolutely, we can develop those standards.
Because I, I think it wouldn't be as bad. It's just, it's, when you have a 20 or 30-foot-high wall that just visually assaults you, like there's, there's nothing to break it up, there's nothing to mask the fact that it's there, right?
Yeah. So I think, I think you start with can you, can you design it so you don't have such a big wall? And then from there, you know, how do you mitigate it if, if it is necessary? So yeah, absolutely, we can, we can include that. We can include graphics and, and plant types and things that, that, you know, are more specific and will have more impact.
So on the questions you have for us, I think, yes, the planning department should be able to require connectivity. And I'm curious, I don't need an answer, but can, as part of the development, a road might not be feasible at the time or make sense, but maybe bike path or walking path to kind of start building that interconnectivity right off the bat? If that's possible, that would be neat. Should there be specific frontage types that are allowed? Yes. I'd be interested in seeing what you come back with as, like your recommendations based on our previous conversation. And then developers are providing, it's not a policy question, but you bring up the open space. I think that needs to be looked at pretty thoroughly. I realize tree farm is not going to be possible everywhere. I think Rituja brought up excellent point that doing stuff like that increases home prices beyond what we might have outside of just your standard supply and demand. And right now, there is not enough supply to bring home prices down at all. And I think it's unrealistic to view it as possible for us to really drive down home prices to really affordable. But we can be careful to not increase them more than necessary while trying to maintain this Sammish character that we're still working on defining. But I think that's something we need to look at pretty closely is that question there.
Great. We'll, we'll come back to you with, with some more information on that. It sounds like there's an interest in looking at some controls related to the size of lots and, and homes, relatively speaking. So we can come back with some specific, some specific suggestions on that, that we can talk about at our next meeting.
Jeff, is that your next?
Sorry.
I think your next one is large homes on small parcels.
Yeah. And Karthik maybe had a comment before we go there?
Yeah, I just, I just have one comment. Can you scroll back to the other slide, please?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, while I agree that the, the dead-end street should be considered temporary, I just want us to think through that the residents don't, are not taken by surprise. So is there a time limit? So is there a time limit? You know, I think I echo Mike's comment here where it is determined that there is a connection possible or not possible. And it's kind of set in stone because you don't want people to be moving in and three years, four years down the road, the city is going to go bulldoze and build a road across. I think that, you know, until such time, verbiage kind of concerns me. And I would love to see if we can put a time limit whereby it is actually set in stone, whether the connection is possible or not.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's good. You know, in some cases, you may be able to make a connection right away. In other cases, it would take some time. Maybe there's some documentation that could be filed, you know, so people are aware of it when they purchase property. And yeah, we can sort of look into any time limits.
So some, there's a number of places around the city where there's a big old sign that's a future connection that says future road connection here. And I think that's actually a pretty good idea because it's harder for people to claim that they're surprised when there's been a sign there since they bought their house.
Yep. Great point.
I think limiting it to not allow it to be up, to be reclassified. So, you know, if it was a neighborhood street, you wouldn't want all of a sudden a connection to be made and it to turn into an arterial street. I think that if you were to put up a sign like Chair Baupin says, and you were to then just continue that same neighborhood street in its character and its traffic level. But what I would want to make sure we included in the rules and in the language was that you would not be allowed to upgrade or change the street classification to like an arterial, right? You wouldn't want all of a sudden a connection to be pushed through and now there's an arterial there. That's not the intent here.
Yeah. That's a really good point. So we can have, for example, like if you're doing a subdivision, don't use the existing dead-end street to be your primary access or something like that, right? So it's not overly burdening the street. I think that's a great thing to include.
Yeah, the only thing is, all these words and verbiages can be interpreted in many different ways, so we need to be very careful about that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll try to be as clear as possible. We'll try to use graphics where we can. And, you know, the city, as with any new code, will have to build up a record and a precedent for how those are applied. But that is always a challenge. Okay. Any other final comments on this one? Do we move on to the next one?
I have just a quick clarifying question. Right where you're at, the 400-foot maximum block length, what's the purpose of that?
That is, again, not necessarily meant to be a prescriptive standard, but let's say you're building a neighborhood and, you know, it's 2,000 feet from one connection to the next. Again, it's sort of a way to encourage more connectivity within the neighborhood as opposed to less. And I think like the street connection, this would be applied somewhat differently based on the context. You know, again, the example of a hilly site, you're not going to impose a strict grid, but it's saying that, you know, and it could be not necessarily a full street connection. It could be just a pedestrian connection or a bike connection or both. But it's a way to connect your neighborhood and provide ways of, you know, moving about the neighborhood as opposed to funneling everything on one street or whatnot. So oftentimes, cities will put these standards into play. 400 is still a relatively large size, maybe not for Samamish, but for what other cities use. And then another way to do it is a 1,600-foot perimeter, which gives you more flexibility. Doesn't have to be 400 by 400, it could be some other configuration. So I'd be interested in your thoughts on that, whether you want some guidance, not only on dead-end streets, but internally, how connected are those streets? If that makes sense.
Well, thanks for answering. And that helped clarify the purpose in terms of helping to support connectivity, which I think in general, we've really said is something desirable. So that helps to put, you know, a guidance on how to achieve some of the connectivity. So I think that makes sense, Jeff. Thank you.
Yes. We can provide some examples of that as well. And again, we want to provide flexibility too. Okay, so now we're getting into the site planning, which again, we covered a lot in our presentation, so I won't go too much detail. Again, this deals with the size of the home, the size of the lot, the sort of height, open scale of the building. Again, because of the open space allowances, you can get down to very small parcels regardless of what district you're in. You just have to provide more open space in some districts versus others in order to get those small, sort of 5,000, 4,000 to 5,000 square foot lots that seem to be favored by the developers. And then the issue of sort of parking and garages and driveways and how that's dealt with. So I think the first question, should the city implement new standards to right-size homes based on the size of the lot? And so one of the things that we've been kicking around is again, a floor-to-area ratio, which again, would give people flexibility to choose, you know, how big their home wants to be, but it would have to come with a larger lot. So we've been thinking about something like 0.5 potentially as a starting point. Could be a little lower, could be a little higher. Just for example, that would mean you could build about a 2,500-square-foot home on a 5,000-square-foot lot. If you wanted to go bigger, you'd have to go bigger. And then there could be some nuances to how that's applied. If we wanted to encourage people to build duplexes, you know, on a single lot, we knew we could increase the FAR in order to do that. If we wanted to encourage accessory dwelling units, you know, maybe those get some sort of exemption or some additional floor-to-area ratio that would allow for that. If a developer or property owner wanted to develop, say, a detached garage or put the garage in the rear of the building where it's not visible from the street skate, maybe we treat that a little bit differently. Whereas maybe attached garages that are visible from the street, you know, are a part of the FAR limit. So I don't know exactly what the right standard is per se, but I think it would be a really pretty simple way for the city to implement that. And again, allow flexibility, but, you know, get a little bit more lot size for particularly these projects with bigger homes. And then related to the driveways, again, variety of ways to deal with parking. You know, you could set your garage back. You might have a limit on how wide the driveway can be based on the lot. You want a wider driveway, you have a wider lot. You want to use an alley, you can have a narrow home on a narrow lot. So lots of flexibility. So we're just kind of looking for direction and questions from the Commission as to, you know, if any of these concepts you like or don't like, or any other suggestions you may have that we haven't talked about. And then I think another one that we thought about is, you know, setbacks as opposed to being prescriptive on the setbacks. Maybe there's some flexibility, particularly on the side yard. So if you wanted to have your parking on the side of your home, maybe you could have a smaller setback on one side and larger on another. And maybe that could be applied for larger projects consistently, you know, so that you don't create these sort of awkward relationships. Another thing we've talked about. You know, maybe on slope sites, maybe there's a little bit more encouragement for larger parcels because it gives you more flexibility in design and might minimize grading, particularly related to driveways. I don't know if that's always true, but that's something we've been thinking about. And then another one that David brought up, which I think is a good one, and I have a picture, didn't make in the presentation, but you know, maybe there's encouragement of buildings to be set closer to the street in some cases on upslope sites to sort of minimize the overall grading that has to occur on those properties. We've also talked about maybe, you know, a requirement to have the front door or the walkway at least like identifiable and sort of separate from the garage and driveway area. You know, some cities are favorable to that. Some, you know, think it's kind of going too far to require that. And then the last piece would again, just be some basic maybe frontage standards for landscaping for new subdivisions that deal with just like street trees and kind of major, you know, some major elements to create a nice street skate element. So we'll stop there and open it up for questions and input.
So if we decrease the floor-to-area ratio, then we can also increase the requirement for kind of native landscaping within the parcel, right? Like if we go back to the earlier presentation where you were talking about the difference between kind of like forest versus other types of greenscaping around homes? I would say in my own opinion, I am more favorable towards having more space to have more greenery so that we can preserve some of the kind of natural elements of what Samamish has.
Yeah. And it also allows you to do tree preservation that's more integrated on the lot, right? So if you're like in the tree farm and you're developing on lots of those sizes, you can keep that area feeling pretty wooded. And it's not just one open space tract, but every parcel has some measure of mature trees. Whereas when you have the 5,000-square-foot lot and the 4,000-square-foot home, you know, everything you do is going to be new landscaping. I will say that most cities don't tend to get super heavy-handed in terms of regulating people's landscaping on single-family homes. So that's just something to think about. But certainly for new projects and for subdivisions, you could require the initial plannings to be native and you could certainly have some standards particularly around the frontages of those properties, you know, for native landscaping and the design of it.
One of my biggest worries is that if we allow like the FAR to get too high, we'll end up with these developments that are kind of built like fishbowls where you have a very high density of homes kind of clustered in the middle of it and then, you know, just like a ring of shrubbery or trees or something like that around it to obscure the view or obfuscate the view. But, you know, really nothing in the middle, like a barren wasteland.
Yeah, the, so for example, the high crop, the FAR was like 0.8. And we've seen some examples that are even close to 1. So that will give you just some measure. You know, 0.5 again, you know, to build a 4,000-square-foot home, you'd have to have an 8,000-square-foot lot.
So some of the conversation that we've heard on this in the past has been along the lines of, you know, does it matter on a larger-scale project? So say, I don't know, I'm just throwing out there, say 15 units, 20 units. On a larger-scale project, does it matter so long as the frontage is blended to match the context of character of surrounding neighborhood? And so long as there is a perimeter that helps blend it to match the context of surrounding neighborhood? Does it matter if the home is built in the middle of that new development that people are opting into, they're buying into, that there is a smaller lot and a bigger house? This was something the council talked about quite a bit at the Phase 1 Development Regs adoption because the development community was raising the issue that they would be happy to design a project that provides for better blending and better amenity around the perimeter and along the frontage if we are going to give them flexibility and reduce setbacks, increase lot coverage in the middle of the property where nobody can see it and where somebody is opting into that because they're buying into that neighborhood.
David, I've heard you say that a couple times and I agree that people are opting into the neighborhoods, but at the same time, there's no shortage of demand for these houses. And so people who want to live in a three- or four-bedroom house, they don't have a choice. This is what's being built because it's cheap and easy and they're going to keep building them because people are buying them. And I think as I'm looking at the character of the whole community, I mean, it's nice that we can kind of hide this ugly thing away from everyone and what they're going to see, but I think thinking about it long-term as we try to build Samamish from multiple, many small communities that were created when it was unincorporated to what we want now, I'm looking at, not just hiding things away.
So just to be clear, you know, I'm not an advocate for that. I just want to make sure that we've answered the question and the call-out by the building community when we get to that point. The, you know, one tool that we have is, as we've talked about at the beginning of this meeting, the addition of PUD rules or some sort of design criteria, design review type rules where there actually is an increased amount of landscaping and an increased amount of design by building modulation and massing and those sorts of criteria to get at what TC's saying, you know, that you're not just going to go from a really well-thought-out blended perimeter to a sort of a wasteland of an interior to a project, that we actually look at cohesion across the entire project. So in that sense, you know, it might be something to look at with a PUD. And that was where we ended the conversation at Phase 1 was that we promised the building community and the council that we would consider superior design, is what we called it, through PUD where you might be able to get a little more density on a site, still achieve the blended, you know, nature of a perimeter, still achieve the landscaped frontage and get all the architectural, we'll call it, you know, the architectural cohesion interior to the project with required landscaping, et cetera. So that's one I'll throw out there just as an option.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply if it came across that way that that was your opinion. I just had heard you bring it up a few times and so I apologize if that's the way I phrase it, but so that's okay. So that's just my opinion on that point of view.
Can I interrupt you, Josh, just to extend the meeting? Can I move that we extend the meeting to 9 o'clock? Thank you.
Moved in second. Did it extend to 9 o'clock? Holes in favor? Aye. Aye. Close, no? Thank you.
So on the question, should we look to right-size homes? Yes, so a farb sounds good. And there's a lot of other options you bring up to make that look great. I think, yes, we should look more at that. Yeah, and I definitely like the, you know, the idea or the conceptualization of being able to maintain an aesthetic, at least on the public side of something if there's like an arterial access. I think that's really important to, you know, what it is that we're trying to do as a community. You know, having, I frequently go back to the condo or apartment development that's hippie corner to Samamish Highlands. It's kind of on the same corner as the Boys and Girls Club. It goes kind of up into the hills and, you know, you can see some of the stuff on the ground level and there are some winding streets in there and it grades, you know, very gradually into the back. You know, it's not like the Isaguas Highlands where you can see that just this mountain of housing that's very densely clustered together. I think it's well planned out.
Yeah, I think that could be one of the things that's looked at early on is like public views. Where can you see, you know, where can you see, where can you see the project from different public areas, whether it's streets or parks or whatnot? And in some cases, maybe the city requires a view analysis, right? Where there's a graphic. I mean, all of that stuff is so much easier to do these days, but, you know, it should be a way for them to be able to demonstrate what those impacts are during the review process.
I have a question about, and this is really a second question about the design impacts and basically the frontage look within the development. I would guess, and you probably would know this, but using alleyways, having a garage in the back gives you a much nicer front to the house and, you know, that presentation. But it would reduce the amount of plantable space and add to the non-permeable surface. Is that true? And if so, is that really a direction that we would want to encourage?
No, I don't think so because I think essentially, instead of having the driveway in the front, you have it in the back. So it's a So it's essentially a wash and I would say, it's not always true, but driveways in the rear tend, my experience, tend to be shorter in length. You know, whereas you don't want in the front yard, the cars to be parked right up against the sidewalk, right? So you want your driveway to be deeper than at least 20 feet, which is typical length of a car, whereas with an alley, that's maybe a little bit less important. So I think it's either a wash or maybe a little bit less, but.
I, I would have thought that the alleyway itself would kind of control that.
Oh, the alleyway itself. Yeah. Yeah.
Not the drive. Yeah. So, and, and I don't, I'm not sure I have a strong opinion about this, but I didn't want a voice, that it seems like some of the, everything here is trade-offs, right? And so we can have one trade-off that says we want the front of the house to look nicer and more pleasing to those that are driving through or walking through. And then at the, the potential trade-off with a little bit less greenery, a little less, you know, permeable space, that sort of thing because of the alleyway in the back. You know, I, I don't know if I have an opinion one way or the other on that in terms of what would be best for the community, but I do think we should be cautious and make sure that we've, we allow for that, you know, kind of maximum of the green space and, yeah. So just a caution.
Yeah, no, that's a really good one I hadn't thought of. And I think, you know, there could be like landscape or planting requirements around alleys to kind of soften them. And maybe there's some creative alley design that is less than just this rip of asphalt, you know, that maybe is a little bit more low impact. So we'll do some research on that and find some examples that we can bring back and have that discussion again.
So I, I would just add to that, that I think that we should be aggressive about our improvements in the requirements for the frontage. You know, I think out of all of these things, as David kind of described it, that that's probably the one thing everybody can agree on. And then in, in terms of what happens with the neighborhoods, I, I think that a robust study of floor area ratio and what impact it might have with subvisuals might be helpful because I've heard both positives and negatives about that and how it can be utilized in ways that you don't expect and, you know, how do we really set that and have the outcome we want? I mean, I think that the, the idea that we don't care about what's behind the, the landscape buffer, you know, we, I've lived in this area for 24 years and I think that the people who developed and built here left us a legacy of neighborhoods that are comfortable, that have a variety of different house sizes and shapes and, you know, there's a pretty good legacy there. And I would hate for our legacy to be nothing but 10 years or 15 years of six-bedroom, 6,000-foot McMansions that are all five feet apart. That's just not, maybe that's what we're going to end up with because we can't control it, but I would prefer to try to find a way to not do that. But again, prioritize the, the perimeter, frontage first, and then work on the other things as, you know, second on the list.
Okay. Yep. We will, we'll do that. Go ahead.
Can I add a, a, another point of interest here? And this goes back to the, the, the housing strategy that this commission worked on a number of years ago. And, and I, I, I'm curious whether the, the commission would support addition of some sort of blended averaged FAR requirement. And I, I'm just, I don't know whether we can do this or not, but I'm, I'm curious whether, you know, for projects of a certain scale, that there must be, you know, an, an average FAR of some, you know, point four, you know, something like that, that then allows them to build some bigger and some smaller, and it ultimately ends up providing for diversity. You know, one of the things we've always hoped in, in our work is that we start to see some projects that have, you know, like a subdivision that has some bigger homes with ADUs, some duplexes, and some smaller homes. And that they are spread throughout the division to provide for a, a, it's not necessarily affordable housing, but it is a diversity of housing choices at different price points in the market. And one of the things we learned from our work in Arch with the city is that there is a certain population that is occupying a certain housing type that is at the, that is precluding others from taking that, taking, taking their place in the market, right? So there's a, there's a limited supply of a certain type of unit. So if we were to try to stimulate the, or promote the, the construction of a different type of unit, there may be some value in, in adding diversity to our housing stock as, as Commissioner Baughman says.
Yeah, I think that's another interesting idea we can look at, and we're, we're happy to bring back other approaches. I mean, FAR is one, you know, but there are, there are some others. I mean, the simplest being just the minimum lot size, but then, you know, that gets into what are your other controls? So we'll bring back some graphics. I mean, we have some that we've already developed, but we'll bring back some for one of our next meetings that show, you know, different FARs relative to, to lot sizes and we can have that, that discussion.
If I could ask a quick question, really to what David just brought up. Does, David, I, that would not increase the total density of a project in, say, if I knew something, it would, it would just change the, the makeup of the housing, right? Okay. That's it.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, except for the fact that you can double up on duplexes on corner lots or affordable, or duplexes that meet 80% AMI in affordability. So a, a developer, and this is, I think, one of the most underutilized, under-promoted tools we have in our code, is we've had it there for quite a while, is that you can, you can build a duplex on a corner lot and it counts as one unit. You know, and we, but we haven't seen builders use it. We, we haven't seen builders want to diversify the product that they're building. They are building the maximum square footage that they can sell on the market today. That is what they're doing. And, and Todd Levitt explained it to our community advisory group, Todd Levitt from Murray Franklin. And, you know, it's, it's an interesting clip to watch in the videos because he explained why they end up building what they build because of all the costs that go into it and it's the only way for them to still hit their, their, their profit point in the, in the, in the construction there, there, or, or in the, in, you know, in, in the industry that they're in, in Sammamish.
Any other comments on this one? Um, let's see. Those are most of the big ones. There's one, I'm not sure if it's the next one, but there is one. Um, yeah, I think it's this one. Yeah, so this one here, this is good. So we combined a couple of topics here. This is really related to development on slopes and clearing and grading allowances. And again, some of that will be addressed at the sort of neighborhood design standard level, right? Design your site to, you know, minimize grading, fit in with natural tropic, that kind of stuff. And then there's some issues related to, you know, specifically land clearing and grading when it's not necessarily related to an approved permit or a development. So one of the things we think should be considered is basically you can't go out and preemptively clear or grade your site except for very minor allowances, which we talk about in the document, unless it's part of some sort of approved use, right? So if you have a vacant lot and you want to develop a house, then you can clear it, you know, and grade it after you get the approval for that. Some of the allowances under the current code, specifically number four down below here where it says, essentially you can go out onto a site and eliminate or cut down any conifers less than eight inches diameter at breast height or deciduous trees less than 12 inches. So, I mean, those are not necessarily really small trees and to be able to go out and preemptively clear that in addition to, you know, ground vegetation and understory could have a pretty significant impact. So I think what we're looking to do is really connect clearing and grading activities with unapproved use. And that comes into play not only just on small vacant sites, but also the connection between developing out your subdivision, say, infrastructure, your streets and things like that versus the development of the individual lot. And I think the closer we can bring the clearing and grading approvals and the actual development itself together, I think we're going to be in better shape. So those are some of the examples and policy questions that we have for you. So down below on vacant and undeveloped sites, should clearing and grading only be allowed as part of a permit for an approved use, right? So that's, that's a question. Should clearing and grading of individual lots be permitted as part of a subdivision or should it be at the time of a building permit is issued? And again, there, there were some new limits on, on cotton fill that were put in, for example, in Phase One, which we talked about a little bit last time. Should we remove those exemptions for tree removals for the conifers and for the deciduous trees I just mentioned? And then the last one, should applicants have to file a notice with the city for invasive species removal if over a certain area? So it's a little bit of a tricky one. On the one hand, we don't want to have barriers to people removing invasive species at the end of, at the same time, it's hard to know what people have done after it's been done. So it's, it's sort of hard to verify and if a large area is cleared, it may include some, you know, native vegetation in addition to invasive species. So those are, those are kind of the questions related to this topic. I'll stop there. Questions or comments?
This might be for David and it's a little tangential, sorry it's getting late. What's part of, like, would TDR be part of this or is that a completely different topic?
It's a different topic related to the town center. We do not have any R, R-zone receiving sites for TDRs currently.
Okay, but that was talked about like on and off, right? Like that has been a conversation, especially for when development happens in steep slopes or not really?
That, that, that is a conversation that, that is off and on again. It is something that is in our code and what it, what it does is TDRs that, that we have allow for a property owner who has a property that is fairly encumbered, that meets a certain criteria, to set aside that, that property in, in a perpetual easement in favor of sending the square footage or development units to the town center for development in the town center. It hasn't taken off because we have this agreement with King County that we have to use King County TDRs before we start to use our own internal city TDRs. And the total number of county TDRs that were contracted to take has not yet been, been fulfilled. So we haven't actually seen any internal city of Sammamish TDRs be utilized for that reason.
What, in reading all through this, I know that there's a, I mean, this is actually a topic that has a lot of, a lot of issues and a lot of history that's behind it. It seems like the questions you've asked the commission are pretty straightforward about, I, I guess my question is, who, what are the, what are the negatives of any of these, any of these proposed solutions? The one I can see is that there will be some people who would be concerned about the smaller tree size just because it's more restrictive. I don't really feel drawn to opposition to that, but I could see where someone might argue that. But I mean, what is the, what, other than a builder who wants to clear a large area, you know, when the weather's good, I, I don't, I guess I don't understand, is there really anything particularly controversial in any of these?
Yeah, I, I don't think so. I mean, I think it's exactly what you described. It's, it's the larger developers and, and what they can do on individual lots. Like can they go in and clear it, but they aren't building the house till two years later? I mean, I think that's something we kind of want to avoid. I think it also becomes maybe a little bit of a less issue if, if, you know, if we're moving towards a little bit larger lot sizes where some of those trees will be preserved sort of indefinitely. I also wanted to clarify the, like, the prohibition on, you know, the size of the tree that you can remove. I think that's more geared towards like vacant and undeveloped sites or forested areas. It's not the individual homeowner who has a small tree that's eight inches and, you know, on a, on a single-family parcel. I think that's less the issue because you have the significant tree standards already, which are, you know, geared towards larger trees. So I would, I would agree with you. I don't think these are tremendously controversial except for potentially the, the issue around larger sites, but I think it's certainly a reasonable thing to do. I mean, in this fast-paced development, you know, it's hard to imagine things sitting around, but go back to the, you know, Great Recession, you know, how many lots were, would have been cleared in different communities and then suddenly it's, the project goes away and they're all just sitting there, as opposed to if the trees had been kept, at least, you know, you would have that benefit. So I think you have to also think about it in, you know, if we ever get to a time where development isn't so rampant, you know, kind of accounting for the fact that projects do get stalled and, and could sit there for a little bit, for a little bit. Okay?
My only question is on the fourth one.
Yeah.
Outside of more busy work for the city and the person who wants to clear out invasive species, what's the, what's the benefit to the community or the city or the person who has to fill out the application for, for that? Why would we want to do that?
Yeah, the benefit would be that someone didn't say, oh, I was removing invasive species, but really cleared a bunch of non-invasive species. And then after it's removed, it's really hard to verify anything. So I think that would be the benefit is there would just be a little way of noticing it or, or having a record of it.
So just making sure somebody isn't going to lie? It seems like, so the issue I have with something like that is the city right now doesn't have enough staff to properly maintain their code, to properly enforce their code. And so right now, we're, the reason why we have the locks on the doors is to keep the honest people out. And having this here, it, it just seems like extra work for somebody who's going to follow the rules anyway.
Yeah, that's fair. And I, I think we were envisioning it more as a passive thing, you know, they file it. The city's not verifying it or necessarily even approving it, but if it becomes an issue and they get a call and they say, oh, well, they filed this and, you know, they, they took pictures and they filed this and at least there's a record of it. So unless it became an issue, I don't think it would necessarily be a lot of work, but, you know, David, I think could speak to that better and whether the city has the resources to do that or not.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we, we've had some ups and downs with various level of activity where someone thinks they're doing something, they don't really realize how many square feet they're actually impacting. I, I, I think, and I, I could speak to the, the, the last two, you know, the, the threshold for a smaller tree and then also filing notice for invasive species removal. We, we do have problems with invasive species removal where it's an erosion issue. Often these invasive colonizing species are along wetland edges or stream edges and a group might go in and remove them. Well, what are they putting back? Is it bare soil? You know, are they putting down sterile straw? Are they following? So what it does is that they're filing this with us, although it is a burden on staff time, I agree with that, but it does provide us an opportunity to have that, that interaction with them, to say, hey, did you think about doing this this way? Or maybe we have an information brochure that we give them about our expectations so that they're not then just going to do something unintentionally. I don't think that they're bad actors. And I've actually worked with several HOAs directly where I've actually gone out to the property and talked to them about what they should and shouldn't be doing, just because I'm, I'm intrigued by the fact that they want to be good stewards and I'm willing to find the time in my schedule, even if it's coming in early or at lunch or something, I'm going to go meet them, I'm going to talk to them about it because I want to foster that in the community, that, that sense. that in the community, that sense of stewardship of the land. And I think this just gives us, you know, that more ability to do that. It also gives us an ability to search people who are interested in this type of stuff when they file this with us. And then when we do outreach, we could start with them and say, hey, you know, you are early adopters in the community, you might be able to help us get the word out, kind of thing, right? So there's a lot of benefits to that. It would be free. We don't want, you know, to be a burden. We just want to help pull everything together and make it all be successful.
Okay, with your explanation, I'm a little bit more comfortable with the direction you're wanting to go there. I would, yeah, that's all I got to say. That's good.
Good. Good. Unless there's any other comments, I will say that we've pretty much hit all the big topics that we wanted to cover. And I know we're three and a half hours in, so I want to be respectful of your time. And, you know, so I guess I'll just ask if we want to stop here and we could take any questions on these other ones at the next meeting or via email. If you want to keep going, we can keep going, but I think there's some redundancy in the last few ones, so I'll just stop there and see what the commission would like to do.
I welcome other feedback, but really, I think, Jeff, there's just this one left, isn't there?
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, maybe this is.
I don't think it's anything.
Yeah, the last one. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. I thought there were a couple more.
Yes, well.
Okay, great. So this is.
I'm sorry, could someone just move to extend us to 9:30 so we can just have our public comment after this last one?
Yeah, move to extend the meeting to 9:30.
Second. Moving second to extend to 9:30. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Those no? Thank you.
Okay, so I think this topic came in as part of the docket request, so deals specifically with Inglewood and Tamarack, which are in critical drainage areas. The examples are projects in Inglewood and Tamarack are challenging due to lack of infrastructure and presence of critical areas and steep slopes. Challenges have resulted in impacts to the neighborhood and existing homes. We heard a lot, a lot about this in the community advisory group. Critical areas and buffers are not adequately maintained over time and become further impacted. So, you know, they may honor the buffer during development, but over time, things creep in there, vegetation starts getting removed and improvements start kind of expanding into the buffer. So questions for the commission, should there be specific requirements related to erosion control in critical drainage areas such as Tamarack and Inglewood? And I think, yeah, so there already are some special standards, but erosion control in particular is important in those areas. And then should clearing and grading of individual lots be permitted as part of a subdivision or should be at the time of building permit is issued? So that's essentially the same question we just discussed. And, you know, we could have stricter standards in critical drainage areas because that removal of vegetation, you know, theoretically has an even bigger impact in those specific areas. So I'll stop there and open it up for discussion.
I'll kick it off. Yes, there should be specific requirements. I walked that area with Mary and she's pointed out to me some troublesome things and I think that we should be able to address those. So, yes.
Okay.
One question I have about this is that, and I admittedly don't know as many of the details as I should, but it's my impression that I've heard people say that in some instances, the impact to some of these areas is things going on outside of what might be considered the critical area or the, you know, the most important part of it, but then subsequently have a downstream effect on a critical area. So I would just say that if we're going to make changes that have restrictive requirements or are specific about it, those should in some way acknowledge not only what needs to be done in the area, but also in areas that could otherwise affect that critical area. So, you know, somebody, really what that means is if you have a critical area, whoever's upstream from that critical area at some point probably needs to pay attention as well. Maybe it's not at the same degree, maybe it's not in the same way, but still has to be part of the solution rather than just sending their problem downstream into a critical area that then exacerbates something that's already going on. It's not a, it needs to be a holistic approach is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
We do have that general setup in one of our overlays, the critical areas near sensitive water bodies overlay. And within the critical areas near sensitive water bodies overlay, there are two subcategories or two sub-areas. The first of those areas is what is called the no disturbance area. And that is an area of significant limitation in what you can and cannot do during certain times of year, what types of uses are allowed, excuse me, subdivisions are prohibited in that area. There then above that, still within the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies, is the drains to no disturbance area. So like what Commissioner, Chair Baughman is saying, the area that is upstream of the no disturbance area has a different set of requirements or limitations in what can and can't be done at different times of year, what the requirements are. And it's primarily related to erosion control and flow to ensure that water is not being sent down the hill, causing the hill to unravel. So that's a very similar sort of context to what we would be looking at under what I think Chair Baughman's talking about.
Yeah, that sounds like the right approach to me.
How many such critical drainage areas are there in Sammamish? I mean, what are we looking at here? Is it just Tamarack and Inglewood? How many of them are there? Are the problems similar in all these neighborhoods?
It varies by geographical quadrant of the city. You know, the biggest area that is, I guess, most susceptible to these types of issues is the westerly slope down to, like, Sammamish from the plateau. And that's an area where the soils unravel quickly, where there might be instability due to different layers in the soil substrate. And the drainage patterns cause for groundwater seepage to occur, causes for suspended sediment in the water to enter the streams and ultimately the lake. So I think that the biggest concern there is that if trees are removed and impervious surface is added, that it can cause a pretty detrimental effect to those properties downhill. We do have these problems in other parts of the city, although not nearly as bad as that the Tamarack and Inglewood areas. Also, the Monahan Basin's pretty bad further south. So the idea here is that we would just place a more restrictive permit requirement in that, you know, if you were going to impact more than 200 square feet of area cumulatively over, you know, the period of, you know, five years, you need to have a permit. And the permit then would stipulate what type of erosion control protection measures are there, there are. It would analyze the impervious surface and how that impervious surface is being treated with detention, retention and water quality. It would also analyze what type of vegetation is being removed, what type of tree canopy is being removed and what it's being restored with. One of the big problems we have is people take down trees, remove vegetation and don't put anything back. And what ends up happening is the soil slowly unravels through rainstorms and that sediment ends up in our streams and ultimately in places like the Zaccoos Creek culverts where you've seen photos of those culverts right after they were installed are ready filled with sediment. So that's where the issue, I think, primarily is here, what we're trying to address.
Got it.
Any other thoughts or questions on this one?
One other comment, which is a little bit of the other side of the coin, is I would want to make sure that we're paying attention to how any of these kinds of changes might affect people that, you know, existing residents in, like, the Inglewood neighborhood who want to make improvements to their house. And, you know, I'm not sure to what extent that our intent here is to be too heavy-handed with those situations versus, you know, people who are clearing land or trying to do development or doing things, you know, really incorrectly. So I would just say let's keep our eye out for that.
Yeah, thanks. We'll make sure we do that.
I have one comment. I see that it's single-family is checked, but large-scale is not checked. Any reasons there, like, you know, we won't allow large-scale in any of the undeveloped nearby critical drainage areas or?
Yeah, I think because Inglewood and Tamarack are older plats, so it tends to be smaller scale development. Is that true, David?
Yes, the lots, the Inglewood and Tamarack lots are interesting in their configuration. It's kind of like somebody just went ahead and did a two-dimensional drawing without consideration of any of the topography out there. It's a really, really old division and it's what I call a paper plat where they basically just carved up the land without consideration of topography or drainage features or forestry, forested conditions. Roads are put in in places where you couldn't conceivably build a road according to the paper plat. And the issue there was that these lots were created long before we had subdivision law in Washington State. And I mean, I could tell you a lot of stories about the Inglewood and Tamarack neighborhoods and what we have to deal with. And I won't bore you right now, but if you're ever interested, feel free to give me a call. I'm happy to give you a tutorial on the history of Inglewood and Tamarack.
Yeah, I think my question would be, you know, we say critical drainage areas such as Tamarack and Inglewood. I can understand Tamarack and Inglewood being single-family. How about the other critical drainage areas? Are they of the same types where there's only single lots available? Are there no critical drainage areas where we would not allow large-scale development? So that was my question.
Yeah, so there are, critical drainage areas stretch throughout the city. They're pretty far-reaching. So they're, you know, multi-family town center type areas. So we just want to make sure that, we would want to apply these rules to all the R-zones as I see it. So I hope I answered your question. It's not, critical drainage areas are not unique to Tamarack or Inglewood. They are in other parts of the city as well.
Yeah, so I think to answer your question, this should be checked as both. I think when I filled this out, I was thinking just of Tamarack and Inglewood because that's what's stated there. So we can amend that to address both. Good point. All right. Any final thoughts on this one? Okay, I think that's the list. Yeah, this one got connected and so that's it. Very nice job, Gung Doo.
Thanks, Jeff. He wore us down. Oh, I think he's frozen. Okay, I think that's it and I think we lost Jeff at the exact right moment. So let's go ahead and do public comment.
Thanks, Chair Baughman. I'll go ahead and read this statement real quick. It looks like we do have one caller on the line. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Virtual Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. For verbal agenda public comment, up to seven minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. In order to provide verbal public comment, you must call in. Please call the following number and input the access code when prompted. The phone number is 1-872-240-3311. The access code is 699-839-229. Once you have joined, you'll be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it's your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say unmuted when that occurs and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. Please hang up when your comment is complete. I'll go and unmute the first caller. Go ahead and begin whenever you're ready.
Hi, this is Mary Wichter and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish since Sammamish Incorporated. I also do live in Tamarack. And great discussions. I'll kind of go here. For Tamarack and Inglewood, there are four areas where there's a lot of existing lots and vacancies in their building. You can't actually do a subdivision because, like, the pilot program room is removed. But the pilot program for erosion hazard near sensitive water body actually has some good things that you should consider while you're looking at doing these things. There is a drains to the no disturbance area in erosion. There's a drains to the landslide hazard area. Tamarack is one of the few places in the city that doesn't have the erosion drains to plus the critical areas drains to the landslide hazard, which is why you keep hearing from me and having things come up. So hopefully we'll fix it with that. And yes, to what almost everybody said from the planning commission. I did want to add one thing and hopefully Jeff from Framework or one of the staff can take notes. Not only can you build in landslide hazard areas, you can strip all the trees, which you're supposed to leave 100%, you can clear and grade everything and then you never have to put a blade of grass or anything back. And then when people do that, what they do, they don't want weeds to grow, so they lay plastic or some sort of fabric liner and then they put a whole bunch of bark on it. And that's what we live with for eternity after that, until the weeds grow through or they decide to plant a tree. So I really would like it if we could have, that you can't have what I call the hidden impervious, that it gets put down. It does cause problems when somebody does try to plant things. And I would like to have that added. I've requested before. Also, it's one of the docket items that we decided not to dock it with. We shouldn't be cutting off tree limbs on big trees in the lower part of the branches in a forested area because that doesn't help the trees and messes with the environment and the wildlife. So if you could either add that in here or add it into the urban forestry management plan. On the invasive species, what Josh was asking about and how David Pyle replied, if someone's removing invasive species, which I actually did recently with my permit, which I don't need a permit for, you do need to have a plan for what you're doing. So I fully support their, like, you use the product guidance, you follow the code and you need to say what you're doing, take photos. Because if you don't have a plan, you end up with vacant things that have been cleared. And I have quite a few pictures of more people have done them in critical areas and then you never know what's going to get done and they really should have native plants and other things. Ratuja in the period had asked about TDRs. The TDRs, there have been 20 to 22 sold, which meets the requirements. There actually is a docket item that I submitted with Mary Johnson that's been approved that could be considered and be worked on. And that needs to happen sometimes so that when you're building in these areas where you shouldn't really be building, you could transfer the development rights somewhere else, town center or somewhere else. So I would like that not to be said that it can't happen. It can happen. There's a docket item. It's queued up. It just needs to get enough impetus to get into the work plan. For clearing and grade allowances, a lot of people that have vacant lots, particularly around me, are discovering that if their neighbor cuts the tree down, they get a bigger view and then they cut the tree down and they want the trees cut down on the road below so they can get a bigger view. And if it's not restricted or if they don't get caught until they've done it, then they get the view until the tree goes back, which it doesn't if it's been trimmed and topped very badly. So we do really need to look at the clearing and grading. And it's not just a square footage, like, 2,500 square feet is currently a limit in the code because that's what I found out with my permit. If you go over that, you need a permit, but if you're under that, you don't need to. But an entire lot, single lot in Inglewood is 2,500 square feet. You could clear the whole thing. So what we did when we did stormwater regulations is we said that it had to be a percentage of what you were doing. So if you have a small lot and it's a percentage, you trigger it. Or if you have a big lot and it's over so many square feet, you trigger it. So I'd like to see those things. I fully support the FAR or the Florida air ratio, especially if you do an average one, which David Pyle talked about to get diversity in housing. I would like to see, for septic, I would like septic dealt with, I think Mark Baughman summarized it best. We have a lot of septic. 17% of our city is in septic. We have a lot of septic, 17% of our city is in septic. It's only 10% countywide. We have 3,500 old septics, a lot of them are very old, 30 to 40 years old. Belleville only has 1,200, Redmond has 500 or less, Izua has 400 or less, so they're down at the 3% to 5% range. We have a lot of them, we need to deal with them, we need to get them connected. Sewer is the right way to go. There are LOSs, which are large onsite sewage systems that can be used like septics. There are technical things, but with the land that we have, the steep slopes that we have, the existing lots that we have, I just don't think we're going to be able to do that. Please read my email that I sent in today. I will also forward after the meeting tonight what I sent in to Sammamish Plateau Water for their public hearing, which was on earlier this week. And please watch if you can, the city meeting, because I do understand they've asked Sammamish Plateau Water to come. But the short story is, is they can figure out an interim solution that will get us out of the moratorium in up to three years, and you don't need to worry about not having capacity, that's to get capacity. Might go north or might go south, or just need the upgrades to be able to do that because King County does have the capacity. So it's not a 10-year or 35-year thing that's being this publicized. It's actually like a one-to-three-year thing, and they do need to do some things, but you're only going to see a temporary sewer moratorium. And we do need to get people off old septic. So I hope you'll read the stuff I sent in. I really appreciate the amount of work you guys have done, the extended meetings, you have awesome thinking, and thank you very much for giving me the chance to talk tonight.
Thanks, Mary. I'm going to go ahead and place you back on mute. We have one more caller here. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. This is Paul Stickney. I live in Sammamish at 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I heard Mary's comment. She did an excellent job, and you guys covered a lot of ground all evening. And I'm not going to go over all those things, just a couple of infill things in my notes. On the email I sent you earlier in the week, I still think there's a lot of good questions and suggestions there to consider across the board for sort of an even-handed, what's the right mix between getting the character, lot size, and look and feel, and people's, you know, property rights, and the needs for different and diverse housing. I will just say that. The only other couple, small things to add is I did listen to the Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer Meeting, actually their last view that they had, and what Mary said is accurate there, coming up with a two- or three-year plan, but something that was very interesting to me, and I was not, what's a good word? I was not aware of it. The northern diversion that is being talked about is actually a Phase One. So, and they are planning that to be in place within roughly eight or, you know, 10 years. But it is subject to King County Council putting it on their county six-year CIP next year. So Kathy Lambert was on the call, there were sewage folks from King County on the March 22nd call. Everybody was committed, but it is subject to a King County Council vote, so it's hard to know exactly how that goes. But the thing that was really interesting was that is not the long-term aim of the county. Very, very interesting. They're looking at a 50- or 70-year horizon to reconstruct the South Line that now goes to the West Point or whatever that's called, and redirect all Sammamish sewer to the North and reconstruct. Now, they did not talk about why, but to me, it would make sense that there's going to probably be a lot of growth in the South areas, whether it be Izua and all those cities that are served. So it may be that they want to move all Sammamish sewer to the North. But that was a very interesting fact. That's their 50- or 70-year plan. So to me, what that meant to me is the northern diversion is more important, both for Sammamish, but also for a regional implication. So that's all I have this evening. Have a good evening, and I'll be in touch. Thanks, bye.
Thanks, Paul. That was our last caller, so I'm going to go ahead and hand it back to you, Chair Baughman. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jackie. Okay. The last thing I think I'll mention, unless David wants to, but just on the calendar, our next meeting is the 15th, and that one is important because it's our public hearing and deliberation on the urban forest management plan. So make sure you are geared up for that one. The good news is that's a 6:30 start, so we'll get away from our 5:30 for this one meeting and give you an extra hour to have something to eat beforehand, so you guys don't have to watch me eat snacks at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, any other business? If not, someone can move to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, moving to second, we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, both middle. Thank you, everyone. Good job tonight, and we will see you on the 15th.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Bye.